All right. Irene, could you please read the note that's required?
Yes, of course, Mayor. So just as a reminder to hopefully you can hear me okay, as a reminder to everyone that this meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 29-20, which suspended certain requirements of the Brown Act. For those attendees on Zoom, if you wish to make a public comment, simply push the raise hand icon and then wait for the mayor or city clerk to address you, and then you will have three minutes. If you're calling in via Zoom, simply dial star nine, and then you'll be instructed to unmute and begin your time as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and the meeting is called to order. Todd, could you please lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Would you like to do a roll call first, or do I go to that? I'm sorry, pledge is perfect. Here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lance.
Present.
And Mayor Cruz.
Present. Jose, report on closed session.
Yes, Mayor. The council considered a few items under closed session today. No reportable action was taken. Staff was given direction.
Any conflict of interest among any of the council members? In none, we'll move on. Agenda review.
Unfortunately, there are two conflicts of interest for a public hearing item number eight on landscaping and lighting for zones one and two.
Okay, thank you. Agenda review. Any changes or deletions?
Madam Mayor, there's no, no, no changes to the agenda. I do want to note that an updated proclamation was submitted, and it's included in the agenda packet dated June 7.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we are going to ask for public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the council agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not, not listed on the agenda. Attendees will be muted until they are called upon for public comment. To make a public comment, use the raise hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer, or dial star nine if you're using just your telephone. Please listen carefully for the mayor or city clerk to address you by name or phone number, and for the audible Zoom notification that you have been unmuted. Once you begin your public comment, you, your three minutes will begin. Email comments will become part of the record and viewable online at the city clerk's office. Any hands on items not on the agenda?
I'm showing two, or a few hands, Mayor. For items, so for comments on not on tonight's agenda, we will start with Linda.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Yes, so my comment is, it's about the whole water thing. I had the opportunity to go to Senator McGuire's town hall drought, and they talked about having an ability in real time to see how much water you're using, and so I emailed someone, or called the city council anyways, not the city office, and was told that Cloverdale doesn't have that option. And I think that if it's possible, it's something we should offer because it's very helpful to know, and also if you have a leak that you don't know you have a leak, like it's in your drip system and it's underground, you can't know that, but if you can look at a real time thing, I have an app for my solar. It's awesome. I turn on the cockpit, I know how much electricity I'm using. You know, I make choices based on that. And so I think to assist the residents, to be able to do a better job with saving water, we need to have some of these technological advances available to us. So that's my comment, and I guess my question is, is that something that is possible?
We are not addressing any of the issues you just commented because they're not on the agenda. We will take that into account. Thank you very much.
Recording in progress.
And then next, we have phone number ending in seven zero four three.
Go ahead, please.
If you're calling in with the phone number ending in seven zero four three, you can unmute yourself to make your comment. There we go.
Hi, hi, it's, I had to unmute, sorry. It's Rob Kozlowski on the water rate increase issue, and I encourage the
Agenda, we cannot take that comment at this moment.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood. It said to do, okay, when does that, does that come later in the meeting?
That is correct.
Okay, next, we have Trudy.
Trudy Folsom, go ahead and speak.
Great. Hi, thank you. I'm new to these meetings, and I'm wondering why we can't see the participants list to understand who else is attending. If these were in person, we'd be able to see our fellow Cloverdaleans, and it just feels really odd not to be able to see who's here.
Sure, so this is, this meeting is being conducted via a Zoom webinar, which only is allowed viewable of the panelists who you see before you. Attendees are roughly right now at about thirty-five people, and that may include other staff members, public, and consultants. And it's really more for security purposes.
Okay, thank you.
And we have no other hands, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, please. No other hands? Thank you very much, and we'll go ahead and start with proclamations. David, could you start with the first proclamation? It's only one, huh? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read that proclamation.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to read it if you like. I'm, I'm ready now.
I'll go ahead and read it. So, um, let's see, A, B, it's B, correct? Whereas, okay, proclaiming June 2021 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and ally pride month. Whereas Cloverdale's local LGBTQIA+ communities represent an integral part of our community and enhance our community's well-being. And whereas the LGBTQIA+ community are our neighbors, mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, friends, and allies. These individuals are vital to our city and demonstrate with pride and commitment by virtue of their contributions to our city's economy and quality of life. And whereas the LGBTQIA+ community includes elected and appointed officials, professionals, business owners, decision-makers, employees in government, as well as public and private enterprise, parents, students, homeowners, charitable organizations, and volunteers. And whereas June 2021 is International Pride Month, a month that reflects upon a movement fifty-two years ago when a black trans woman of color, Marsha P. Johnson, threw the first brick at the Stonewall Bar in New York, New York, the Stonewall uprising began as a fight for equality and in opposition to discriminatory laws and treatment. The Stonewall uprising continues to inspire the modern LGBTQIA+ civil rights movements. And whereas the city of Cloverdale recognizes the modern LGBTQIA+ civil rights movement started as a protest for equality. In June of 2020, this, those protests took on a new meaning with the Black Lives Matter movement, as the city hopes that both movements will continue to lead to significant steps forward in the move towards a more equal, just, and fair society. And whereas California has been a leader in advancing the civil rights of the LGBTQIA+ citizens, and the city of Cloverdale is no different. While further progress and achievements need to be made, it is important to recognize and celebrate the immense gains and progress to the LGBTQIA+ community has made to date in our community, state, and nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Martha Cruz, Mayor of the city of Cloverdale, do hereby proclaim on behalf of the Cloverdale City Council, June 2021, as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender pride month in Cloverdale, and urge all our citizens to join together in ending prejudice everywhere it may exist, to respect the rights of, of all people, and to celebrate the diversity resulting in cultural richness within our city. And this is to be presented to Jane Elias. Is it Jane?
Actually, Carol Russell, yeah.
Carol Russell?
That's right.
And, um,
Mayor, we have a little problem.
Okay.
The original, which you read, proclamation was rewritten with corrections and submitted and accepted and has been distributed. Library Commissioner, Library Commissioner Reese Foxon, in whose home I am this evening, along with my wife, helped substantially to rewrite that with me, and that's the one that we're supposed to be voting on tonight. Do you have a copy?
Well, I am very sorry. I, I am very sorry on, on misreading the incorrect one. Would you like to make some comments on this, please, Carol? And I must say to the public that Carol was our council member for several years and past mayor. So, thank you. Go ahead.
Maybe we should not use the word past. It always makes me nervous. I'm seventy-seven. So I like to think of was mayor. But anyway, it's a pleasure to be with you, and I was looking forward, frankly, and truly honored to accept the proclamation on behalf of Cloverdale's LGBTQI plus plus, and more pluses, I'm glad to say, community. I'm not prepared, of course, to accept the original, so we need to have some correction on that. Perhaps our city manager can fill us in?
Madam Mayor, if, if you like, I can read the revised or updated proclamation for the benefit of Mayor Russell and our staff.
Yes, please go ahead. Please go ahead.
Well, good evening, council, and thank you, Mayor Russell, for joining us this evening, along with Jane Elias. The, the item tonight is the City Council proclamation proclaiming June 2021 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and allied pride month. Whereas Cloverdale's dynamic LGBTQ+ communities represent an integral part of our, of our larger community and enhance our city's well-being. And whereas the LGBTQ+ community includes elected and appointed officials, professionals, business owners, decision-makers, employees in government, parents, students, homeowners, volunteers, as well, as well as charitable organizations and public and private enterprises. And whereas the LGBTQ+ community are neighbors, mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, friends, and allies who are individuals vital to our city, demonstrating their pride and commitment by virtue of their contributions to our city's economy and quality of life. And whereas June 2021 is International Pride Month, recognizing a movement started fifty-two years ago at the Stonewall Inn, when the gay and transvestite communities, along with others who were racially and ethically diverse, rose up in opposition to rampant discriminatory laws and treatment, beginning the overt fight for equality and inclusion, including systemic discrimination. And whereas the city of Cloverdale recognizes the help given by the LGBTQ+ civil rights movement, which started as a protest for equality in the creation of a foundation for more current movements, such as Black Lives Matter, continuing to take significant steps together in a move towards a more equal, just, and fair society. And whereas California has been a leader in advancing the civil rights of all citizens in its work towards equality, equity, and establishing a creative culture and social justice, it is important for the city of Cloverdale to recognize and celebrate the immense gains and progress the LGBTQ+ community has contributed to the process, to our state, the nation, and in particular to those made to our own community of Cloverdale. Now therefore, be resolved that Mayor Cruz, Martha Cruz, Mayor of Cloverdale, you hereby proclaim on behalf of the Cloverdale City Council, June 21, as lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender pride month in Cloverdale, and urge all of our citizens to join together in ending prejudice everywhere it may exist, to respect the rights of all people, and to celebrate diversity resulting in cultural richnesses within our city. This proclamation is presented this day, June 9, 2021, proclaiming our mayor, Martha Cruz.
Thank you very much. Reese, or Jane, would you like to say anything else?
Come on over here, Reese.
No, I'm just thankful that Cloverdale is joining the celebration of a lot of work that has gone on over the years. Two-thirds of my lifetime. That's scary. In any case, thank you all very much, and we're gonna move forward together, and that's the whole thing. We're moving forward together, absolutely, as a community.
And I, this Carol, and I want to tell you, I have been truly honored to accept this proclamation for our community within a community. Cloverdale is an extraordinary and wonderful place, and this is just one example of how, of how our elected officials and our staff really do feel about our fellow citizens and fellow residents, and it, I get a little weepy. I'm allowed at seventy-seven, you know, I could do that. I'm younger than you are, Reese.
I know you are.
Just thought I'd mention that. Mayor, thank you very much. I want to move along because I know you've got a heck of an agenda here, and we want you to get to that, too.
I would like to add one thing.
Go ahead.
Cloverdale is involved in this because of Carol Russell. When I first moved here, they weren't. They were on the outside. And when Carol came in and became a council member, she began saying, hey, we have a whole community with a lot of different people in it, and it's because of her that we're sitting here today. Anyway, thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Reese, thank you. There were a lot of wonderful people involved in advancing the cause of equality under law, which is really what is the substance here, so that we are all equal people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Walter, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. Carol, I just want to say it is so good to hear your voice. It's been a long time. And I just want to convey my best wishes to you and Roz, Reese, and Jane. Carol, you've been a true leader of this community. You've spent twelve years on the city council, along with Councilmember Paula, and I appreciate everything that you've done to forward this movement. So my best to you and Roz. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's been, it was a great honor and one of the joys of my life to serve.
Very well. Anyone else? Thank you, and we look forward to hugging you in person soon. Oh, wait, Melanie's hand came up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to thank Carol for her leadership, and of course Reese Foxon's as well. This community is far and away better off because of, of your leadership and the example that you set. And I'm glad that, thanks for insisting that we read the right proclamation because we want to do right by you. So, thank you so much for, for all, for, for all that you do. And I don't want to leave Jane out either. She's, you know, serving on our citizen advisory committee boards in addition to her county jobs. So I just want to, you know, thank you, you know, all three of you for the example that you set and the, the service that you give Cloverdale and our wider community. So, thank you.
Don't forget, we're still recruiting for a library commission from Cloverdale. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council, unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. So, any hands? Irene?
No hands raised in the public, Mayor.
And can I get any comments from, or perhaps?
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion for suit three and four.
Okay, so that sounds like Lance, second by Bagby.
Sure.
Sure.
Irene?
Yes, Councilmember Lance, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay. Any communications that council may discuss?
Madam Mayor, there's a correspondence included in the packet. This is a, a letter that was addressed to Councilmember Melanie Bagby. It's in regards, or it's from the Cloverdale Unified School District in regards to a notice to implement developer fees. The, the school district is indicating they are holding a meeting on June 16 to consider a school facility fees in accordance with the Education Code, Section 17620. The intent would be for the school district to adopt new, new school impact fees, and they're providing notice as required to the city of Cloverdale.
I'm assuming everybody got it. I just, I think I'm the one who forwarded it to the clerk, so just in case anybody wants to discuss it, or.
Any comments on anyone? Any members of the public?
No hands are raised, Mayor.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and move to our public hearing. Items will begin at the time shown or as close thereafter as possible to allow for completion of the item. Number seven. So to conduct a public hearing for the fiscal year 2021-22 budget and resolution adopting the city of Cloverdale budget for fiscal year 2021-22. David?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This, this item is a follow-up of your May 26 meeting where staff presented a draft budget for fiscal year 21-22, starting July 1 of 2021. At your May 26 council meeting, staff provided a fairly detailed overview of the budget, including the economic factors that are driving the, the budget, you know, both revenue and expenditures. Staff at that time did provide counsel with some of the funding options for nonprofit organizations. Counsel provided feedback on, on their perspectives on the, the request for nonprofit funding, as well as some additional discretionary items that were, were not included in the original draft budget. The, the budget today, before you, largely reflects the input from council. We've summarized some of the updates that were requested by council in your agenda report, which largely reflected the funding that was being requested by some of our local nonprofit organizations. I'm, I'm, just for reference, gonna highlight some of those. One was to include $5,000 in funding for, for, for Friday Night Live, to support some of their expenses, a reduction of, of funding for the Boys and Girls Club, some additional funding for 211 Essential Services, as well as a subsidy for, or funding for the History Center. Since that time, we did receive an additional funding request from the Cloverdale Performing Arts Center in the amount of $15,000. I did want to acknowledge that we did receive that request and seek counsel input on, on what your, what your desires are in terms of funding amounts for, for CPAC, if, if any. The letter that they submitted did highlight the economic impacts that they experienced due, due to COVID. But otherwise, the, the, the budget that was presented and is included in your packet is a, is a comprehensive budget, including all operating funds, the general fund, the Water, Water Enterprise Fund, Sewer Enterprise Fund, impact fees, airport fund, and a number of special purpose funds. Staff is available and ready to answer any, you know, additional questions you may have about the, the comprehensive budget, or again, the funding that, the decisions or recommendations that you previously provided. And what we're, the requested action tonight is to adopt the budget by resolution. There is a resolution included in your packet that would support adoption of the budget. You do have the option to make final adjustments to the budget, give staff direction, and then adopt the resolution, acknowledging the, any minor adjustments that are, or, or major adjustments you'd like to make to the budget. Otherwise, staff can bring the budget back to your next, your next council meeting for, for final consideration. And staff would request, of course, that council adopt the budget prior to the end of the fiscal year. So we have an operating budget to start the new fiscal year, July 1. With that, I just want to pause and see if council has any questions in regards to the previous presentation. Like, your, your senior management team is here and ready to answer any questions about, you know, major programs, projects, or priorities, and, and, and if you have any follow-up direction relative to the proposed expenditures within the budget. And I think one last item, I did receive a request from, from a council member to include funding in the budget for a, a council, City Council retreat to work on collaboration and communication. And that may, that would be an item I would recommend also, council, indicate your support and what funding amount you'd like to see in the budget for, to, to, to support a council retreat, and, and, you know, and fund it accordingly. So with that said, I'll, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, and again, your senior staff members are here. If you have, if any council members have any questions or comments that you'd like staff to make about the budget.
Thank you. I see that Councilmember Walter has his hands up.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. David, I just want to make sure that you also received a funding request from Joyce Mann for the Sculpture Trail. I had forwarded that letter to you as well. I didn't hear you mention that particular function.
Yeah, great question, Councilmember Walter. The, the budget that we presented on May 26.
The, the budget that we presented on May 26th did include the original funding request from the Sculpture Trail in the amount of $2,500 that, as requested by Mrs. Mann. And I, I do want to just announce here that I, I think this may be Mrs. Mann's last year. She's indicated her, her plan to, to retire. And, you know, we, we may want to acknowledge that in the future, obviously as a separate agenda item. But I just wanted to note that at this point, because it, it is an important project activity that we've funded in our budget for a number of years.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you. Lower your hand, please. Okay, so I would like to hear, what is your recommendation for CPAC allocation? Councilmembers?
Well, Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll take the lead on this, if my council members don't mind. CPAC, as the city manager has mentioned, really had some pretty significant impacts as a result of COVID-19. What they're looking for now is to be able to, and it's not, basically what they're asking for is a holder of $15,000. And they will come back with specific performances that they're going to be putting on. One of them, of course, is the Christmas celebration that they do in conjunction with the Chamber. When we close the downtown, they, for shopping and what have you, they do the Christmas Carol at the Performing Arts Center. So, they're looking for that. Their contributions by donors has suffered because of COVID-19, and they're looking for some relief. So, I'm in favor of getting a placeholder on the budget of the $15,000, and they will come back with a list.
Councilmember Bagby?
Yeah, through the chair, could I ask Councilmember Walter to just clarify? It, it sounds to me like you're saying that it's, it's, it's the $15,000 is a placeholder, and then, then we would be a sponsor of the Christmas Carol or the, a holiday show?
Excuse me for not explaining myself or making myself clear. Yes, we would hopefully sponsor the Christmas show. But in addition to that, I don't have the letter in front of me, but it was a rather lengthy, two-page letter, I'm not sure whether you received it or not, highlighting exactly what they wanted.
I've been reading a lot of letters lately, but I will say that I would definitely support that. I think that that's a very important part of our, our holiday program for bringing folks into downtown. And I think it's going to be more important than ever that, that we get behind those kinds of efforts as we're, as we're coming out of COVID. So, I, I'd wholeheartedly, you know, support that. And they may not even come back for the whole thing. I bet they will. But I'd like to make sure that that placeholder is in there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lance? Vice Mayor?
I was getting to the mute button. I, I would absolutely agree that there'd be a placeholder. I would like to see where it comes in, to see if it needs to be money that we donate or, or use towards them, or that they come back and use as a loan until they can repay, depending on how it goes. But a placeholder of that size is perfect in my eyes.
I would support that. However, I would advise CPAC to make sure they're inclusive in the celebrations and what's portrayed in terms of the whole community as it celebrates the Christmas season. And with that comment, I would like to ask Irene if we have any hands in the public regarding this item.
I am looking, Mayor, and no hands are raised.
Okay, so you have direction from the council, David? And Susie? Any other questions regarding budget or any other comments?
Oh, we were, we also wanted to find out if council supported, including funds for a council retreat.
That is correct. So, do you have a bowl, you know, something, a ballpark amount?
My, my recommendation, Mayor, would be to establish, again, a placeholder of $10,000. And of course, what we can do is work with, with council, either through a subcommittee or an ad hoc, to define the scope of work that council would like to see be undertaken as part of a council retreat. And, and then hone in on the, the cost for conducting the council retreat, which would very likely involve, you know, facilitator and, and, you know, collaboration assistance from consulting, consultants to, you know, help with team building, et cetera.
Okay, that sounds reasonable to me. Team? Councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember Walter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, that just seems like a lot of money, $10,000. David, I would envision us going over to the firehouse and, and having the retreat there, at their hall, and probably having some sandwiches brought in, brought in for lunch. So, I'm not quite sure how we get to $5,000. But I would also, once we agree on the amount, like to see that we carve out some time to go over the governance manual. Maybe that will hold our feet to the fire to get that rewritten. Because I'm not sure where everyone is on rewriting and submitting the changes that they're recommending to you, but I tend to think that everybody's lagging behind on that. Once again, I'm just not sure if 5,000 is the right, 10,000 is the right number for me.
Councilmember Bagby?
I, I completely understand where Councilmember Walter is coming from. But again, this is, this is $10,000 that we would set aside in a budget. And it's, I, I would imagine that we're going to hit 5,000 on a, a good facilitator. Pretty, that's about what it's, it's going to cost. And then we're going to have some overages. So, I, I actually, I'm in favor of going ahead and setting it, setting it aside, but I don't anticipate that we would be spending it all, because that, that, that is a, it's a lot of money to me. Personally, no, it's not a lot of money in the scheme of the, the city budget. But I, I think it's necessary, especially since this is really, you know, the, the first time that this group of folks are, are going to be going out. I think we need, you know, we need to be able to, to get a top-notch facilitator, facilitator. And then, you know, if the firehouse isn't available, or there isn't a facility available, we are going to need to have a conference room somewhere. So, I, I think that we should go ahead and set it aside for now. And, and then, you know, try to keep it well underneath that budget.
And Madam Mayor, if I can, just to elaborate a little bit. Often with a, with a good facilitator, of course, there's the, the cost in time of the, you know, paying for the facilitator. There's often a report that's prepared and disseminated. And it can, can also involve individual interviews with council members, you know, one-on-one. Again, to, to help facilitate, you know, collaboration and communication on common issues. So, it really is dependent on the, the scope of work that we, we engage a consultant to assist us with. And, and, and so it's, it's, it's more than just a, usually it's more than, for it to be really effective, it's usually more than just a, you know, like a, a workshop. It's, there's, there's prep time, you know, meeting with council members, and a follow-up report that can serve as, as a guide for council members on, on, on common issues. And so, that, that's kind of the, the scope, I guess, that, that I was envisioning, you know, may be developed. And, but staff's here to work with council to, you know, to flesh out what you'd really like to see come out of this, this workshop retreat amongst yourself and senior staff.
Councilmember Lance, do you have any comments?
I think it's $10,000 that could be spent quickly, but also could, in a small town like ours right now, could be spent on, on better things. However, I think that we definitely need it, especially me as a new council member. I look forward to these things to help me learn. But I, I agree that 10,000 is a lot of money that could be spent elsewhere. I would, I see it as a placeholder. I understand that. But I, I just caution us to not spend it.
Do we have any hands in the public before I make my comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have a couple hands. So, I will start with Leanne.
Hi, everyone. First of all, I just want to echo on Gus's sentiments towards Carol. It was really good to hear her voice. And this retreat and the facility, you all can come up to my house. I mean, Todd, you've been here. You've seen how big it is. Come on up here, do it for free, battle it out, whatever you got to do. But, I mean, a retreat, really, we, I agree with Todd. We do not need to waste money that can be spent elsewhere in this community on that.
Thank you. Any other hands?
Yes, next we have Linda.
Yes, hello, again. So, I understand the hesitancy to spend money. But I would recommend that you really consider this, because your ability to work together is going to be critical to the success of our city. And quite frankly, from what I've, I've been going to all the meetings for a while now. And what I've seen, especially since Jason Turner left, is I think you need some team building. And, and if you get a good facilitator in that knows how to do team building, it will benefit the whole community. And I also, I don't know how you go about this, but I'm hoping that you open this up for facilitators. I'm not a facilitator, but, you know, from all around, so that you can get the best possible person at the best rate. Sometimes, you know, you just get what you pay for. And so, you definitely want to get a good person. But, you know, all new teams, there are stages of development in teams, and you need to beat the working stage very quickly. Thank you.
Any other hands?
No, their hands are raised, Mayor.
Yes, thank you very much, Irene, for your assistance. And I, I will echo Melanie and this, the speaker and the public, because we have been working without truly communicating. And a city needs a common vision. And that common vision comes about when there's clear and transparent communication, not only among council members, but among council members and staff. It is very important to make sure that we understand what our limitations are and what our areas of growth and development are. As a new council member, I have never had any kind of true meeting other than the bias training, which in many ways went in one, went in one ear and out the other. And at the same time, we're going to have another council member. So, in total, it will be three new council members. And I think it's time for us to do team building. Good work requires payment. And we can see all the unexpected expenses that we have had in the past that haven't really contributed to the development of town. And with this, I think it is definitely a placeholder for me. And I, perhaps it's something that we want to bring back when we have the, the additional council member to make sure that it is something that the majority wants. But I definitely support team building and communication building. Thank you. So, David and Susie, do we have any other questions that we need to address at this moment?
Madam Mayor, I don't think there's any other questions. It's, it's really just whether council supports adopting a resolution approving the budget this evening, or if there are any, you know, final or other adjustments you'd like to make. I think with the direction given tonight, we can make those final adjustments. And note that in the adopting resolution that's included in your packet. But if you prefer, we can, we can bring it back to your next meeting. I, I, I think it's certainly appropriate if you don't have any other significant comments to, to adopt the budget this evening. And then we are, you know, we, we have a budget established for the start of our fiscal year, starting July 1.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the item by title only.
And if we could just have that as amended?
As amended.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
So, it's a resolution of the City Council of the city of Cloverdale adopting the fiscal year 2021-22 budget as amended.
Thank you. So, Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lance?
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Thank you.
And Mayor, before we go to the next item, just kind of going back in the agenda. When we did the consent calendar, I thought I heard items two, three, and four. There is an item five under the consent, and I'm sorry if I missed it. I know that there was a couple of council members talking, but if we did miss it, can we have a motion for item number five? I don't know if we covered it.
Jose, I did cover five. It might not have come across, and I apologize for that. So, if you want me to redo five, I will.
No, if you covered it, if you covered it, that was, that was good. I just, I thought I heard two, three, and four.
Yeah, it just kind of got cut off, probably. I apologize for that.
Perfect, thanks. So, it was covered. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so David, item eight?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the community. Item number eight in your packet is a consideration of three resolutions, approving the annual engineers report and adopting resolutions authorizing assessments for districts one through seven for fiscal year 2021-22. Staff was, was present, provided a presentation to council on the report on May 6th. In addition, at that time, you did hear from the, the, the engineer of record, Coastland Civil Engineering, and Mr. Paul Wade, who provided an update on the assessments. Paul is, is available tonight to provide an overview of the assessments, if you would like. Otherwise, the, the request for this item is for council to adopt the three resolutions included in your packet, noting that Councilmember Walter has a conflict of interest for Zone 1 and would need to recuse himself. And likewise, Vice Mayor Lance has a conflict on Zone 2 and would need to recuse himself. And otherwise, all members of the council can vote on, on the resolution authorizing assessments for, for Zone 3. So, if you'd like a, an overview of the assessments again, Mr. Paul Wade is here and can provide you an overview. But if you'd like, if you feel comfortable with moving forward, council can, can proceed with the, the adoption process of the, the resolutions included in your packet.
I am comfortable, however, I would open up to the council if they have any comments or any requests. Seeing none, do we have any hands to address this issue?
We do have one hand raised, Edwin.
Thank you, go ahead.
Just, the, the point I want to touch base is was approved, so there's no, no point right now. So, keep moving on.
Yes, Paul?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, I just, just a point of record, there, there does need to be a public hearing.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, I just, just a point of record, there, there does need to be a public hearing tonight. So just for the record, I'd like to hear the public hearings opened and, and then closed. And then I'm fine if you don't want me to skip the presentation. I've made enough time, so.
Well, you know, if you want to give us a, a quick overview, that would be fine. I will be beneficial to the public.
Be glad to.
Please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Paul Wade. I'm with Coastland Civil Engineering. This is a brief presentation for the Cloverdale Landscape and Lighting Assessment District for fiscal year 2021-22. Landscape and Lighting Assessment District was initially formed in 1997 with the Jefferson Springs development. Additional subdivisions were annexed over time that make up the seven zones that we have now. And in accordance with the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, the city is required to undertake certain annual proceedings each year in order to levy assessments in the upcoming fiscal year. These typically require three council meetings. On February 10th this year, the council initiated proceedings by appointing Coastland as the engineer of work to prepare the annual engineers report. On May 12th, the council adopted resolutions of intent to levy and collect assessments and set the date for the public hearing for June 9. And then tonight, the council conducts the public hearing and then may adopt resolutions authorizing the levying of the assessments. The budgets for each zone are included in the engineers report, which is attached to the staff report in your packet. And there's also last year's budgets for comparison. This point, if we could get that budget review spreadsheet, Irene? Thank you. So this shows the, in the first call or second call, on the proposed budgets for fiscal year 21-22, and then the percentage changes from last year's budget. And in all of the zones, except for Zone Two, there's been a reduction in the, in the budget, and a minor increase for Zone Two. The other thing that, that happened was that we project, you know, at this point, we're projecting what the reserve balances are going to be next June 30th, while we did that last, last year. And right now, it looks like the reserve balances are going to be much higher than what we projected. So as a result, we're recommending reducing the assessments in Zones Two, Three, Four, Five, and Seven. That's Vintage Meadows, the cottages, the vineyards, Ioli Ranch, and Sunrise Hills. The assessment for Jefferson Springs is going to stay the same, and Brookside Terrace will get an increase to the maximum allowed without balancing. Then 2011, the City Council established a policy of a target minimum reserve fund balances of 25% of operating expenses for each zone. The last three columns in this show, in the spreadsheet show the beginning reserve. That's what we think it's going to be on July 1st, and the projected ending reserve on June 30th of 2022. And then what those reserves are as a percentage of this, of the upcoming fiscal year's operating budget. All of them are in excess of that 25% target minimum, except for Brookside Terrace, where we expected to have a zero balance. Each of the zones has a built-in inflation adjustment to the maximum allowed assessment based on the Consumer Price Index. This year, that adjustment is 2%. And as the city manager said, there are three resolutions to account for potential conflicts of interest. One for Zone One, one for the Jefferson, those Jefferson Springs, one for Zone Two Vintage Meadows, and then the other one for Zones Three through Seven. Happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
So it is now open for public to make comments, and then we'll bring back to council. Any hands?
Yes, Mayor, I have one hand right now. Helen?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Paul for his presentation. I feel like I know a lot more, and I'm happy that our assessment is going down. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Helen. Any other hands?
No, their hands are raised, Mayor.
If there are no other hands, then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. And Jose, advise when we need to recuse our.
I think, so Mayor, if I may, I know if there's, you can go ahead and, and take the, the resolutions one at a time now. I know that they're split up in order to account for the conflict with Zone One and Zone Two. And then take any comments on the resolution after the, the council member recuses themselves, and then take a motion and a vote, and then do the next resolution.
Councilmember Walter, that's number one. You need to recuse, correct?
Madam Mayor, I need to recuse from item number one, attachment number one. I live in Jefferson Springs, so I'm going to recuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I don't live in the fancy neighborhood, so I would like to recommend the item by title only.
Todd?
Second.
Thank you.
A resolution approving the annual engineers report confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts and authorizing the levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2021-22 for the Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for Zone One pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lamb?
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we'll move to Zone Two.
So now we need Councilmember Walter back?
Yes. Are you backed us? Yes, he is. All right. So move, move on to Zone Two.
Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to recommend the, the item.
Thank you. You need a second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And I'd be happy to read the item. Recommended by title only, a resolution approving the annual engineers report confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts and authorizing the levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2021 for the Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for Zone Two pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Thank you.
And Irene, can you just note for the record that the Vice Mayor didn't participate on this item due to his home being in Zone Two?
Yes, thank you.
And then is there any other recusal on three, four, five, six, and seven? No. Okay. So moving on to the next district, Zones Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven.
Madam Mayor, I'll offer by title only, please.
I'll second.
Thank you.
And that was items, I'm sorry, that was districts Two, Three.
No, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven.
Okay. All right, City of Cloverdale, City Council, Resolution Dash 2021. A resolution approving the annual engineers report confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts and authorizing the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2021 Dash 22 for the Cloverdale Landscape and Lighting Assessment Districts Number Three, Number Four, Number Five, Number Six, Number Seven pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lamb?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, should we take a break before the next item? Or should we, we should take a five-minute break before going into the next item, please?
Recording stopped.
Thank you, Paul, for joining us.
Welcome back, everybody, and thank you for your patience. And we'll go ahead and put Susie and David and our consultant, Hilda Brand, to discuss the next item, which is number nine. Item nine, hold a public hearing for Proposition 218, water and sewer wastewater rate increase and establishing new water and sewer wastewater rates. David?
All right, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor, for the introduction. And tonight, we are going to provide a presentation to council, an overview of the process that got us here tonight. This is, this reflects, I think, our eighth meeting now on water and wastewater sewer rates that we've had over the last two years. We're, we're joined this evening by our rate consultant and, and financial professional Mark Hildebrand with Hildebrand Consulting. In addition, we are also joined by our city engineer, Public Works Director Mark Rancone, as well as our senior water operator, Darren Hernandez. And what we're going to do tonight is, is, you know, walk through with the council a, a presentation overview of the proposed updated rate schedules for the water enterprise and sewer enterprise. The requested action tonight is to adopt enabling resolutions to support the, the, the new water service rate schedule and wastewater rate schedules that are included in your, in your packet. But likewise, conduct a, a public hearing. And also, as part of that public hearing, consider protests that were provided pursuant to the Prop 218 process. We would like, following the public hearing, a, 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 a brief break to ensure that we can count accurately the, the number of protests received and be able to report back to council on the number of protests received during, during the public hearing or up to including the public hearing. So with that said, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to our rate consultant, Mark Hildebrand. And Mark is gonna, gonna walk you through kind of a, from start to finish, the, the process that we've been engaged in now over the last nearly two years and development of updated rate schedules for your water and wastewater enterprises. So Mark, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. And I'm, I'm sharing my screen. Is that working?
We can see it, Mark, and if you can put it in presentation mode.
Yeah. There we go. Okay, well, thank you, council, for having me here this evening again. As city manager mentioned, this will be, I believe, the eighth time we are meeting. So I believe a lot of the presentation material that I'll be showing you this evening will be familiar. I will touch on the high points. I won't dive into all the details. But of course, at the conclusion of the presentation, if you want me to dive back into more of the details, I'd be happy to do that. So here's the agenda of what I'll be covering today. We'll cover a bit about the project and what goes into a rate study. Talk about some of the legal requirements surrounding rate studies. And then we will talk about the Water Utility Financial Plan, which is essentially looking at the financial strategy for ensuring that the water utility meets its financial obligations over the next planning period. And that includes potential water shortage surcharges in the event of a drought. We'll do the same for the wastewater utility. And then we'll look at the specific rates that are being proposed before, both for the water and the wastewater. And we'll conclude with the public hearing proceedings. So some background, as you are aware, we did undertake a rate study back in 2020, which culminated with a public hearing much like this one back in November. But during that meeting or, or in advance of that meeting, there was a strong public response to the rates that were being proposed. And so staff withdrew the proposed rates in favor of taking a harder look at the capital spending plan and doing some focused and, and also some wide public outreach to ensure that the public had an opportunity to weigh in on what was being proposed and to just better educate the public. So we believe that the recommendations that are being proposed here today are a product and a, and a good compromise based on concerns that we heard from the community. We did, the financial plans do cut significantly deeper into the capital spending plans by continuing to defer capital projects. The, the history here is that the, the city has historically deferred capital spending. And the reason that we are looking at relatively large rate increases tonight is because the city is playing catch-up in terms of getting their rates up to a place where you can actually address some of these capital needs proactively. There's a lot of aging and failing infrastructure that the city needs to address, and that can't be financed with the existing rates. And so really, what we're looking at here is a corrective action to ensure that the city has enough revenue, that both utilities have enough revenue to maintain and rehabilitate their vital assets. So when we, when we do a rate study, there are three major steps. The first one, we call revenue requirements. I referred to this earlier as the financial plan. And this is really just looking at all the money coming into the utility and all the money going out. So the majority of the revenue is going to be in the form of rate revenue, which is the bills that customers pay on their monthly bill. But there's also miscellaneous revenues, such as interest earnings and miscellaneous fees and whatnot. The expenses are in the form of operating costs for salaries and supplies and materials and professional services. And then there's debt service to pay for projects in the past that were debt-financed. And then there's capital projects, which is cash-funded capital projects going forward. So those are the three categories of costs. And what we're looking to do is to find a balance between the revenues and the expenditures based on forecasts of those expenditures. Once we understand how much rate revenue we need to recover from your rate payers, we go through a step called cost of service, which is really looking at which customers drive the cost. So we want to look at who the customers are, how big their service is, how big their meter is, how much water they're using, the strength of their sewage, that type of thing, to understand which customers are driving the cost of the utility. And then once we know how much we want to recover from different customer classes, we then do rate design, which determines how we're going to recover the costs or how we're going to recover that revenue. And usually, that's a decision between how much will be in the fixed charge versus the usage rate. So the usage rate being the rate that changes depending on how much water you use. The legal requirements for setting rates in California are pretty simple on the surface, but a bit more complicated once you get, get into the case law. The Proposition 218 is the governing law, and it basically just says that revenue shall not exceed the cost to provide service. Pretty easy and simple concept. And it dates back to, back in the seventies and eighties when cities used to charge customers a certain amount for their sewer services or water services, and then turn around and use that money to pay for changing light bulbs in City Hall or that type of thing, just using it in other departments. So Prop 218 was really there to ensure that the, the rates that are being charged for water and sewer service are used for that service, which is what the rates that we're proposing tonight will do. The other requirement is that there's a 45-day noticing period before the public hearing, which the city has done. Our objectives going into the study was first and foremost, we want to make sure that your rates are legally defensible. There, there have been a lot of challenges, particularly to tiered water rates in the state recently. And so we want first and foremost, make sure that the city is on sound legal footing, and we're confident that you are. Next, we want to make sure that your rates generate enough revenue to meet your financial obligations. And finally, we want to keep things simple. We don't want to have a water bill that's so complicated that your customers don't want, don't, don't know what to make of it. So we, we kept the rates as simple as possible and transparent. So here's a recap of the public notice and the council meetings that have, we've had up to date. As your city manager mentioned. As your city manager mentioned earlier, this is the eighth meeting that we'll be having after having canceled the public hearing back in November. At this point, I believe that the council is pretty well educated as are your regular attendees. We also, one of the meetings that's listed here was a public forum, which was outside of normal business or city council meeting hours. But we had a special meeting where we invited the public to attend and to ask questions. And we had pretty good attendance, and we had some great questions. So just to start out, before I jump into the numbers, I do want to make one thing abundantly clear. And this reinforces the point that I made earlier, which is that the rates that are being proposed tonight are, in my mind, as a rate consultant, as somebody who does this regularly, it's really a corrective action. The city of Cloverdale has, it currently has by far the lowest rates in the region when you combine the water and the sewer bill together. And this is a product of differing maintenance, differing capital spending. Any utility that is proactively maintaining their system as they should cannot keep their rates as low as Cloverdale has. And so really, what we're looking at here is getting your rates up to a point that makes sense to sustain your utility and to take care of your vital assets. So first point, reiterate that you have the lowest combined water and sewer utility rates in the region. The rate increases over the last three years have been pretty minimal, about 3%, which is about the rate of inflation, so really just keeping up with costs. That's not providing any additional funding for the capital spending that the city needs to do. No rate increases were done in 2020 because of the deferred action back in November, which only resulted in exasperating the city's, both utilities' financial situation and has put more financial pressure on both utilities. So I'm going to dive into the financial plan for the water enterprise. Here's a diagram of the funds within the water utility. And this isn't to scale, but the boxes are somewhat trying to give a sense of where most of the revenue is coming from. So you can see that most of the revenue is coming from water rates, but you also have some miscellaneous fees that you get through operating revenue, interest earnings, some impact fees that you get from developers, and occasionally, the city obtains a grant or a loan. Those go into either operating fund or your capital fund, depending what the revenue is to be used for. And then ultimately spent on either operating costs, debt service, or capital projects. So the combined cash reserves in the water enterprise as of the end of fiscal year 1819 or beginning of the year, fiscal year 1920, was about $2.5 million, 2.669, as you can see here. The revenue for the water enterprise all told was about 3.6 million, with about 90% of that coming from rates. The operating and debt expense was 3.3 million. So to the casual observer, you might look at this 3.6 and say that your revenues exceed your expenses. But what's really important to understand about this is that this does not include any capital spending. And capital spending can be significant. It's usually on the order of millions, if not multiple million dollars a year. And so really, what you see here is that there's about a $300,000 surplus between the revenues and your expenses, which means you could only afford about $300,000 in capital spending in this particular year without drawing down on reserves. And so that's the situation that we're trying to address by raising rates. You can see the different categories of expenses here, including about $1.5 million a year in debt service paying for past capital projects. Mr. Kelly, did you want me to have Mr. Rinkon go through the, describing the capital projects for this meeting? Or how would you like that addressed?
I think that would be beneficial. And in fact, Darren, if you're present, I believe you are, you know, I think one of the questions that has come up is, you know, why do we need to budget for replacement of our Cherry Creek Reservoir and Ritter Reservoir? I know our city engineer has spoken to this previously. But maybe you can highlight, just from an operational perspective, you know, what are some of the concerns you have as a day-to-day operator of our two really significant reservoirs? You know, why do we want to replace these two items that are identified on the screen and for the benefit of the community?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, David. Yeah, so we will start with the South Prest Reservoir. It's also known as Cherry Creek Reservoir. It's on the upper left-hand side of your screen. That is our oldest welded steel reservoir we have in our system. It's a single tank site. It was identified in the previous CIP that was funded through the debt service that Mark was talking about as being replaced then. It didn't fall within the budget at that time, so it had gotten postponed. This reservoir is, you know, has significant issues with corrosion. We've recently in-house put a new coating on the outside of this tank, so it looks different than it does in this picture. But the interior of the tank is where the corrosion is happening. Typically, these reservoirs are taken out of service and recoded interior approximately every 20 to 25 years. This tank has not received recoding because, for most of its life, it was a single reservoir. So it couldn't be taken out of service. Also, this reservoir doesn't have the earthquake hold downs on the foundations. It doesn't have the higher sidewalls above the overflow for earthquake slosh, so it doesn't meet current seismic criteria. So the recommendation is to replace this reservoir. Ritter Reservoir is the blue one to the right. As you can see, it looks a lot different. All those lines on that reservoir are the bolts holding all the different individual panels together. Bolt-together reservoirs typically have slightly less life expectancy than a welded steel tank because between all of those lines, there are gaskets. And every one of the thousands of bolts that hold this reservoir together have gaskets on them. These gaskets have a life expectancy. This reservoir has reached its life expectancy. This, again, was a single reservoir site all the way up until about 2015, when we built the second Ritter Reservoir. Thus, being a single reservoir site, and not only a single reservoir site, it was the only reservoir in its pressure zone. So it was the only reservoir serving Zone 2. It could not be taken out of service for the normal interior recodes and exterior recodes and the normal large maintenance tasks that typically these reservoirs see every 20 to 25 years. Thus, this reservoir has issues that, you know, lead us to recommend replacing this reservoir with a welded steel reservoir that has much longer life expectancy. And David, if it's okay with you, I would like to talk about the chlorine contact tank, too. I know there's a lot of questions on that.
Please proceed, Darren. Thank you.
So in the lower left-hand side of your screen, there's a large 750,000 gallon chlorine contact tank. In 1995, when the plant was built, we had two 50,000 gallon contact tanks. You can see the foundation in the lower left-hand side of this picture. The foundations are still there from those 50,000 gallon contact tanks. In 2001, when we did a plant upgrade, because we had to for capacity reasons, those two chlorine contact tanks would not meet the chlorine contact time required by the state for our regulations for our treatment. This contact tank is not a storage tank. It is part of our treatment process. This contact tank has walls in it that make the water serpentine through the tank. It goes in one side. It comes out the other. The 750,000 gallons create the time that it takes for the chlorine to contact the water to appropriately disinfect that water before being pumped out into our distribution system. Again, as you can tell, this is a single tank. We don't have a second one. This tank was built in 2001. It's now 2021. Again, this tank is coming up due for very large maintenance items, such as interior recoding, exterior recoding, replacement of the walls inside. The walls are made of a vinyl material. Those items cannot be completed without having another contact tank to operate on while we do that work. So the master plan for the water treatment plant was always to put a second 750,000 gallon chlorine contact tank in, where the old two little ones used to be, so that we can take this chlorine contact tank out of service and maintain it and therefore get its full life expectancy out of it. The other project on here is the transfer pumps, the transfer pump replacement project. It's one of the smaller CIP projects, I would say, as far as cost goes. You can see the two pumps on the right are 20 horsepower pumps, and the one pump on the left is also called a jockey pump. It's the smaller of the three. It's a 10 horsepower pump. This is a bottleneck in our current plant configuration. The filters, you can see one of the filters behind it. You can see the two turbidity meters hanging on there. The filters actually have a greater filtering capacity than we do pumping capacity through these pumps. So these pumps are original pumps from 1995. They've served us very well, but now they're reaching again their life, and it's time to start rehabbing and replacing. The proposal is to go ahead and upsize this 10 horsepower pump to a 20 horsepower pump and then have all three identical 20 horsepower pumps, thus alleviating the bottleneck in our treatment plant pumping capacities.
And Darren, one of the questions that has come up quite a bit from our community is whether these proposed capital improvement projects are intended to serve new developments versus whether they're needed to serve, you know, existing customers. Can you speak to that?
Sure. I was involved in a lot of the meetings with these CIP projects. It was, you know, very well-known from the very beginning. Both Mark Rinkon and Mark Hildebrand have done a great job in guiding us through these meetings and helping us come down to what could add capacity and what doesn't add any capacity. What is just projects to keep the current system robust and operable into the future? And so any other projects in the CIP that had any type of enhancement for capacity or production do have a component in their pricing on the CIP labeled and paid for out of impact fees. So the percentages were based on how much does this project increase production and how much does this project just serve today's system? And for the transfer pumps, for instance, the transfer pumps are going to increase flow capacity, you know, incrementally from what we have today. So the pricing for that, that's more heavily priced towards just servicing today's demands and today's system. Whereas the second chlorine contact tank has a little bit larger portion of it paid for out of the impact fees because with two 750,000 gallon tanks, our ability to pump more water into the distribution system will be increased because when both tanks are in service, we'll be able to have more contact time. Therefore, we can flow water into the distribution system at a much higher rate. But again, the main purpose of that project is because this tank is a chlorine contact tank. It's the highest corrosive environment we have in any of our reservoirs because it sees the highest chlorine residuals. This gets the water right after it's dosed with chlorine. Chlorine off gases and is very corrosive. These tanks are, they require more maintenance than the tanks out in the distribution system. And since we only have one, we can't take it down and do the maintenance that's needed.
Okay. Thank you, Darren, for your overview. Mark, at this point, if you want to go ahead and proceed with the presentation?
Thank you for that. Very helpful to get that context when we talked about these capitals projects because really, these are the projects that are driving the rate increases that we're asking for here. So when we look at your reserves, we do want to target a certain level of cash in your water utility. In this case, we're proposing that you maintain a contingency reserve that's equal to about 25% of your annual operating costs, which is about $650,000, is a very standard metric to use for making sure that you have enough reserves to anticipate any changes in costs or changes in revenue that you might, bumps along the road in terms of unexpected costs. The replacement reserve is, and sorry, the contingency reserve is really a level that you never want to, you never want to drop below, never want to plan to drop below the $650,000. The replacement reserve is a reserve that's intended to allow the city to navigate what ends up being very volatile spending on the capital side. One year might be a half a million dollars, and the next year may be $3 million. And so because of that volatility in spending, you need to have some cushion in your reserves so that you can draw down on the reserve some years and build them back up another year. So because of the size of your capital program and the volatility that you've historically seen, we recommend that you try to keep, try to work towards having about $2 million in cash in that reserve and then draw down on it when needed and build it back up when needed. The capital fee reserve is a restricted reserve that is the revenue that you get from your developers when they join the system. There's no specific target for this one. You simply receive the revenue when the development happens. This is a, this particular reserve and that source of revenue has come up quite a bit with public comment. And what I would like to make, just an overarching statement, that that revenue is being completely optimized. We're using as much of that revenue as is available. We can't create more of it because we don't control development. The capital fees that are currently being charged are appropriate. We reviewed the levels, and you could potentially increase them by some amounts, but it wouldn't make a very big difference, and you would probably slow down growth because you would drive away development. And so there's a balance to be had there. But the fees that you currently have in place are appropriate, and they're generating the revenue that they generate. And we're using as much of that revenue as we possibly can. When projects come up, they're eligible to be spent on. So we went through a few different iterations of the capital spending program, and this is the final scenario that was indicated by city council during the last meeting that we'd like to move forward with. And this is also the lowest amount of capital spending, which will result in the lowest possible rates. The annotations that you see here, the arrows and the highlighting, is an indication of how the numbers have changed since the first, or not the first, but rather the scenario that was proposed back in November of 2020, the scenario that was being proposed for those rates. Ended up, we had to work with that capital spending program and determine how to further defer projects that had already been deferred in the past in order to be able to get rates down to a level that the community was more comfortable with. So you can see, I won't go through every single project, but quite a few projects were deferred by multiple years in order to basically push out the obligation. Now, another question that came up here is the 12 million that you see at the bottom right-hand corner. This certainly doesn't mean that we'll be spending $12 million in year six, just outside the window of this planning period. Those are simply the projects that have been identified that need to be done. Those will be spread out over multiple years. And we anticipate that the amount of annual capital spending in year six, year seven and beyond will be very similar to the average annual spending that you're seeing here in these next five years. So we don't see this as an increase in capital spending. Yes, we've deferred capital projects, but they've basically been deferred into the future so that there isn't a big lump of projects coming. Could the city have done these projects sooner? Absolutely. Would the city engineer have been more comfortable with doing them sooner? Yes. But we But we we took a very hard look at these projects and within the limits of health and safety, we deferred the projects as as much as could be done without actually endangering the public, so that's what we ended up with.
And and Mark, I wanted real quick, if you can just go back. I wanted to address a question we received at the start of our meeting tonight from from Linda, Linda, if you're still listening in, I just want to share with you, you raised a question about electronic meters and being able to have real time data. There is a project, it's project number fifteen here, it's the meter radio read upgrade. We've we've identified the costs associated with upgrading the to electronic meter reads, you know, across the system. And and that's that is reflected in the capital improvement projects that are funded by water rates is to update all of the water meters with electronic reads and ultimately transition to a system that enables residents to have real time monitoring system to monitor and manage their water usage. It all starts with, you know, getting the appropriate electronic meter reads on on your meter and then transition to a system that enables the residents to actually utilize those electronic read data to to manage their water usage, so that is one of the projects, it, you know, it's it's not a a low cost project to replace every meter register with an electronic read. As you can see here, we've even deferred some out in time to again reboot the the burden on rate payers. But, you know, this, this is an example, one of the projects that can enhance the ability to serve water by giving, you know, putting data in customer hands to help them conserve better and again, it it costs money to 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 make these this transition and and that's what reflected in this C I P schedule is the the electronic meter reads, I just wanted to point that out because that was a question that was raised earlier, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, and 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 your comments helped remind me that I had a couple other comments to make here regarding some of the comments that we got from the public over the last several months. And one has to do with the reliability of these estimates. And this has been a little bit frustrating because I feel like we've explained this on more than one occasion. And I feel like the the city has done a good job of explaining it. These estimates were developed by professional engineering firms based on their expertise in what these projects cost. And they were validated by city staff, so it didn't come from one source, it came from multiple sources and they've been validated. And obviously forecasting capital spending is never perfect, it never is. But these are good, strong estimates that I don't think anybody's in a position to think that there are better numbers out there and that somehow these numbers have fallen short in terms of of the the quality of their source. The other comment that has been made is that there is some sort of a sixty five percent markup to come up with these and that's another frustrating comment because the term markup implies that it's some sort of overhead or wasted costs. And in fact, that sixty five percent was a not really a number that the city came up with, but the the member of the public who made the comment came up with this percent and it's made up of real costs, apparently it includes design engineering costs, which to my understanding is a real cost, environmental costs, which are real costs. Yes, there is some contingency built in there, but contingencies are there for a reason because things come up and contingents, if you go into a project without any contingency, then that's short sighted, so I just wanted to address those directly because they have come up on more than one occasion and I feel like the city's done a good job of addressing them. And I'll move on. Okay, so this is a diagram of what that change in capital spending is going to look like over the next few years and you can see the dramatic change in capital spending that's going to occur, you can see the last five years that it's been about eight hundred and forty five thousand dollars per year driven almost entirely by a busy year back in two thousand sixteen, but really almost no capital spending for the last five years, which is is not a good thing, it that that's not the city saving money, that is the city deferring very important projects that it needs to address and it didn't have, it didn't have the reserves of the money to do it. And so we're here tonight trying to get the rates in place so that it can deal with this infrastructure needs. So you can see the increase in capital spending over the next few years and eventually getting to sort of a stable three million dollars a year starting in two thousand twenty eight.
And and Mark, before you move on, can we touch briefly on, you know, how how grant funding may affect the these projections? And and, you know, for instance, as you've identified here, forecasted average of two point two million dollars is needed to to fund capital improvement projects. I I I don't fully anticipate that we would be able to you get a get a grant that covers our our annual spending requirements for capital improvement projects. But what if we, what if we did able, we were able to fund you know, one of our, say, critical projects that has a maybe a residency component to to our our water system and our existing customers.
That's a great question, so let's go, let's take a look at a project, so what would be an example of a project that you think could be partially or fully funded with a grant?
Maybe, maybe, maybe the Ritter Ritter Reservoir.
Okay, so if we look at the Ritter Reservoir, we see that it's a one and a half, one point six million dollar project. I don't think that you'll get a grant for the full amount, but say you get a grant for a million dollars for the Ritter Reservoir. If we put that in the context of you know, you get that grant for one big project that happens out, you can see that's part of the twenty twenty six spending year. Really what you, it's that's not a a source of revenue that's reoccurring, it's a one time windfall that occurs. And so you have to basically spread the benefit of that revenue over multiple years, you know, say over five years. So suddenly the the one million dollar windfall turns into a benefit of about two hundred thousand dollars a year. And so it it really spreads out. It really doesn't have much of an impact long term because it doesn't reoccur. And ultimately, you know, if if the city does get a significant, multiple significant grants, then then at that point, you know, what's going to happen is they either you'll have the ability to spend more on projects that previously got deferred or you can, you'll have it be in a situation where your reserves will start to get larger and you can defer some of the rates that were previously passed, you can, you know, if reserves start ballooning and you instead of having two and a half million dollars in your reserves, you suddenly have six million dollars. That's, you know, those reports are open to the public and everybody can see that and that's a good time to say, well, let's pause on this rate increase this year because we're we're over collecting because we got this windfall through grants, so just because the city is adopting the rates doesn't mean that they have to implement them when the time comes, you know, if you were to get windfall grants. That being said, as a rate consultant, I'm I'm never going to do financial projections that include grants that haven't been received, that's that's not part of my job to set rates based on the wing and a prayer. So while it's great that if it occurs, it's certainly not something that we should count on and we can always backtrack on the rates if the if that revenue does come in.
Right, and Mark, let me let me add to just from kind of the, you know, grants management perspective. Most grants these days, i- it's not as if the the funding agency, you know, cuts you a check and says, here you go, you know, carry out your project. In my experience, and and you can validate this, is it's often done on a reimbursement basis, me, the the utility has to have the cash on hand to fund the project upfront and actually then seek reimbursement of those funds from the funding agency. And there's a, there's kind of a timing issue with that. It it can often be that you're not reimbursed for a project that you you actually qualify for funds or, you know, grant funding assistance a year to even maybe two years after you've completed the project. And and and, you know, it unfortunately is this, that's a function of some of the grant management processes that have been promulgated by our our federal and state agencies where you have a lot of paperwork and reporting to. But but is that validated by your by your experience in in the great?
Absolutely, absolutely, yet another reason why you don't want to count on grants because the timing is so unknown and and it can be multiple years before you actually get the revenue depending on the state of the grant, where it's coming from and their funding sources and and various machinations, so yeah, it's, the timing is difficult and, you know, in the meantime, where are the utilities going to get that money? They'd have to either draw down on their reserves or they'd have to go to the general fund, which I think it'd be pretty hard to borrow from the general fund, so yeah, the the timing is is certainly an issue.
Gotcha, and before we go, I I just want to, it might be subtle, but as you noted in your in your your bar graphs here, you got kind of multiple colors, one cash funded and then one impact fee funded and a cash funded, correct me if I'm wrong, is the revenue that's generated by rate payers, whereas the impact fee fund is for those projects that we've identified have some growth component to them, i.e. for some new development.
That's right, yeah, that's right, and I I touched on that earlier and and you're right that I should touch on it again. And what's important is this footnote down here, this is available impact fee fund, so you have about two million dollars that are available over this planning period, so that's the how much you have between what's currently in the reserves and what you expect to get in the future from developers is expected to be about two million dollars over the next ten years and we're going to use every every penny of it. And so the idea that we're not fully leveraging impact fee revenue to minimize rate increases is not true at all. We're using as much of that as we possibly can. There are some limitations, you can only spend it on projects that actually provide a benefit for a system expansion. But as it turns out, there's plenty of those that were not plenty of those projects, but there's enough of those projects that we will be using all of the available impact fee revenue.
Thank you.
So here is a a picture of the entire financial, a graph of the entire financial picture, so on the top, what we see here is the a cash flow diagram. What you see in the background in the green, this represents revenue. So the darker green at the bottom is miscellaneous revenue, this is a grant that was received. The light green here represents the existing revenue that you get from your existing rates and then the dark green at the top represents the additional rate revenue that will be received with the proposed rate increases, so the proposed rate increases are listed down here. And so it's, and and I apologize, this graph could be more clear, there should be a break right here after two thousand twenty six because what's being proposed here tonight are the next five years. So it's a six percent, twelve percent, twelve percent, twelve percent, twelve percent for a cumulative increase over the next five years of sixty seven percent. As a reminder, the cumulative increase that was proposed back in November of two thousand twenty was eighty four percent, so that's a a pretty material drop in the proposed rates over the next five years. The percentages in these out years are only forecasts. We can't ask the city to take any action on these simply because it's too far out to really be able to have any certainty of how much is going to be needed, it may be more, it may be less, but we really just don't know. And there are some law limitations within the law of how far out you can sit, set your rates, and so really we're going out as far as we can. But we don't want to ask the city council to adopt anything beyond five years at this time. Going back to this graph, so you can see the additional revenue that will be recovered as a result of the increases in the rates over time. And in the foreground, you see the expenses, so the dark blue represents the operating costs, the hash blue represents debt service and the light blue represents the capital spending, so if you go, if I go back to this graph here, you can see the shape of this capital spending is mimicked in the light blue at the top of of this graph here. And so the way to interpret this graph is that any year where the reserves are or the column is below the green, that means that you have more revenue than expenses and you're building your reserves. And any year where the columns are above it is a deficit year where you're drawing down on your reserves and so you can see that happening with this red line, which is the reserve levels, you're starting out at about three million dollars and you will be building reserves a little bit in the current year and then drawing down. So despite these rate increases, you can see the reserves are being drawn down until two thousand twenty six. And then at this point, we get to the black line, which is the target reserve level that we talked about before and we stay pretty steady, keeping the reserves pretty close to the target level for the five years thereafter, again, these are just long term projections, we don't really know what's going to happen out there. But to the best of our knowledge and the expenses that are coming, that's, this is what we're expecting to happen. So now I'm going to switch gears and talk about the wastewater enterprise, so Mr. Kelly, anything to add or questions there?
Mark, I I don't have any any specific questions, I I think it's you know, just to make a comment that, you know, based on your, your kind of the upper chart, you can see if you eliminate the rate increases and the additional rate revenue, what impact that has on the capital improvement projects. Essence, you would have, you would have the inability, you would not have the adequate funds in in reserves to be able to fund those capital improvement projects that we we discussed earlier, and so that that's a real critical point, I think it's important to underscore is that the 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 rate increases that are being proposed are the mechanism by which we are going to fund the the capital improvement projects going forward. And without them, we 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 really cannot, we would not have the ability under a pay as you go strategy to to be able to fund these projects. It's a good time to just as a reminder, you know, council did look at two different funding options, one with a debt strategy and one with a pay as you go. And and council was pretty adamant that the pay as you go strategy was the least costly strategy to our for our rate payers. Remember, if you do debt strategy, debt service strategy, you incur, you know, additional interest expenses, it does provide a large capital infusion upfront, but it gives you less flexibility on the back end because you're going to be paying that debt service in 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 many cases for up to forty five years.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, it does cost more in the long term. And issuing debt is really only really appropriate when you have a single large spike in capital spending that's not going to reoccur. Sometimes it makes sense to absorb those one time costs with debt. But in this case, what you're looking at is a new normal, you're looking at capital spending levels that are going to reoccur year after year after year. And so it really doesn't make any sense to try to issue debt to to address that, you really just want to get to a point where you can cash finance it. You remind me of a scenario that one member of the community asked repeatedly that we we look at, which is, you know, what would the capital program look like if we only did three percent rate increases? You know, what kind of capital program can we afford? And admittedly, we never looked at that, I never suggested that we do. Because in my mind, that's 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 similar to going into the car shop and having the mechanic tell you, you know, brakes are going to cost you fifty bucks or you could pay eighty bucks for these better brakes that are going to last you longer. And you turn around and say, well, what can you give me for five bucks? I that's not how you treat your car. And I don't think that's how you treat you, you should treat your utility, you don't, you don't back into a level of capital spending based on a willingness to pay, it's it's what does your utility need for this vital service that's providing water and wastewater services to your to your to your citizens.
Yeah, well, Mark, if candid, let's go ahead and proceed on the wastewater.
Okay. So on the wastewater side, this is a similar picture to the funds that I described on the waste on the water side, so I won't belabor this slide. The the reserve levels on the wastewater side are close to four million dollars as of the beginning of or the middle of two thousand nineteen, three point eight million. uh, 3.8 million. The rate revenue, um, picture is similar. Um, it's about 86% uh, in rate revenue for a total revenue of 2.3 million dollars. You'll see that on the next slide, you get, you have about that much in terms of operating expense. You don't have any debt on the wastewater enterprise, but you have about 2.4 million dollars in, um, operating expenses. So in this case, you can see that just the operating expenses alone are about $100,000 more than your revenues. And so you, um, don't have any money left over for capital spending. And in fact, you're already in a deficit just paying for your operating costs. With the reserves, uh, we have a contingency reserve based on the same metric of about 25% of your annual operating costs uh, or about $585,000. And based on the capital, uh, spending program, we recommend about, uh, $950,000 in reserves in your replacement reserve. There is a, a unique situation on the wastewater side that we do not address with this capital plan. And that in the future, uh, and this may be 10 years out and maybe 20 years out, we're not sure. There is probably going to need to be a, a major project, a major, um, upgrade to your wastewater treatment plant. These are regulatory requirements that may or may not happen, uh, probably will. But the timing isn't certain. And essentially, the regulators are going to tell the city that you need to clean your wastewater to a higher level. And that's going to require an, an entire new train of treatment that's added to your wastewater treatment plant. That, those costs are very poorly understood at this point. They, they are expected to be significant. But we don't know what they are and we don't know whether they're gonna happen. And because there's so many unknowns, we simply can't address that project at this time. We have to assume that when that project does occur, this would be a perfect example of something that you would debt finance. You certainly wouldn't be able to cash finance this type of a project. Hopefully, you'd be able to get some significant grants as well, uh, as we've discussed previously. But we, we can't try to address the cost of this project with the rates that we're proposing. And you have your hands full with the rates, uh, just to pay for your capital program as it is. So, um, we're just gonna focus on the rest of the capital needs for your wastewater program. And Mr. Kelly, would you, did you want to have Darren speak to the slide as well?
But I'd like to ask our, our city engineer to, if you would like to provide a, just a brief summary of our capital spending projects.
Uh, gladly so. And David, um, so what you're looking at are some, you know, I wouldn't necessarily call them capital. These are kind of maintenance, the smoke testing and videoing of the, uh, it's just assessing the, the wastewater collection system, getting a, a condition of it, seeing where we can make some improvements up. And so, you know, these are just as more of assessment projects, not necessarily replacement projects. The second one there bullet is a replacement project. Some of our mains, especially in the downtown area, have, have, have exceeded their, their useful life. Sewers can last for a long time depending on the material. But it gets to a point where, where the, the corrosion starts to happen or they start to get too leaky to the point where we could slip line them. But slip lining only happens one time in their lifetime. It'll extend the life another 10, 15 years. But thereafter, you're looking at pipeline replacement, uh, because you're, you're losing not only lose, you're, you're building the, the integrity of the pipe, but you're losing capacity as well. So you start to lose that, that capacity and that can, can exacerbate your sewers in terms of collection capacity. The, the other one is a SCADA system. The wastewater treatment plant does not have a SCADA system. It has a monitoring system. We can see things, but we cannot operate remotely. And so a modern wastewater treatment plant, all of them operate with a SCADA system. It's a system control and access, data access. And so, uh, we would be starting from scratch for that one. And, and these are systems that you put out throughout, you know, the wastewater treatment plant and along your collection system too. So you get a better idea of how it's operating. This is something we need to do from scratch. Sheham pump station right now, that pump station was, I don't know, not designed to any particular standard. It's just a series of manholes that the wastewater from this specific area backs into, builds up, and then it gets pumped out with a, uh, pump station. Uh, we need to replace that with a proper pump station that has emergency generation capacity onsite. So that when we do lose power, which we know in Cloverdale, we frequently lose power, we don't have to pay people overtime to babysit the pump station. In fact, it will just continue to run seamlessly if it were modernized, enclosed in a proper facility and having a wet well to, to pump from. And then again, the, the last bullet item is more of a ongoing maintenance and videoing of our sewer system to get an assessment of what the system is looking like. So we, we, we do keep video records and we are starting to build a, a G I S system so that we can geo-reference all the data that we're collecting and get a better idea of prioritizing our replacements. And that's kind of shows some of the items that we have in terms of pending wastewater capital spending.
Great. Thank you for that. So again, here's a, uh, diagram, much like on the water side, that shows some of the changes to the capital program, or it, it shows the proposed capital spending program along with some of the annotations that show, um, changes. So the arrows pointing down indicate costs, estimates that were decreased, uh, or just the scope of the project was reduced. Sometimes costs were eliminated, uh, with the X, um, but largely they were deferred, uh, expenses. So here's a, another similar diagram that shows again that in the last five years, the city has only spent $11,000 per year on your very valuable wastewater treatment plant. This is simply not sustainable. And so, uh, you can see the, uh, projection is to try to get to a level of about $950,000 per year. Um, and again, you can see where that we're using quite a bit of impact fee revenue to fund, uh, a number of those projects in the future. Here's the cash flow diagram on the wastewater side. Again, the green representing revenue and the dark green representing the additional rate revenue that will be collected from the rate increases that are being proposed. In this case, uh, and notice that both on the water side and the wastewater side, the first year is, um, about half of what the other rates, uh, if not less than, uh, the subsequent rates are gonna be. While we really could have used a larger rate increase in the first year, it would have helped quite a bit. We do also recognize the current economic, uh, conditions, uh, with COVID and with the economy sort of stalled out, um, and a lot of folks having a hard time with their bills. So we, we certainly recognize that and, um, it's not a great time to be, um, implementing these rates. And so we did our best to defer as much as we could in terms of the rate increases by minimizing how much we increase in year one. And hopefully by fiscal year 2023, the, the economy will be back on its feet. In this case, the cumulative increases over the next five years is, um, less than half of what we proposed back in November was 119% back in November and now we're down to 51%. So, uh, really a significant decrease in the, uh, rate increases that are being proposed. And, and you can see beyond 2026, the rate increases really are, are pretty minimal. So in this case, um, we did find an opportunity to defer a number of projects, uh, quite some time and to spread those rate increases out. So now I'm gonna switch gears to what those rates were actually gonna look like. The proposed water rates, um, for year one with the 6% rate increase on July 1st, uh, in about a month. You can see the current rates are shown here in the first column and the proposed rates. And it shows the dollar change and the percent change. You can see that the percent change, um, is not exactly 6%. And that's due to, uh, changes in water usage that are, are forecast, uh, reductions in water use because of the drought. Ultimately, the city will receive about 6% in additional revenue. But the rates need to increase by a little bit more in order to, uh, close the, the gap with what we anticipate to be lower water usage. This graph, um, shows how those, we, we basically translate those rates into how it's gonna affect different types of customers. So a lot of numbers here, but really just trying to simplify the picture. So we're taking example accounts. And so for example, a single family home with a typical one-inch meter size and load of water use, so only five units per month, currently pays about $48.07. In year one, they'll pay $51.22. It's an increase of, uh, just over $3, um, that's 6.6%. A high water user, uh, will go from 119 up to 127 and also have a 6.5% increase in their bill. So you can see everybody is being treated at the end of the day, pretty similar in terms of the percent increase. And you can see how that translates into dollars. And in year two, um, everyone will increase by the, the 12% that was, or the, yeah, the 12% that was mentioned. Here's a schedule of what the rates will look like over the next five years. So this is the rate schedule that's being proposed and, uh, that we're asking council to adopt this evening. And here is a survey. This just isolates the waters, uh, bills. So for a one-inch, single-family home with, um, typical water usage of six units, uh, you can see that currently, uh, you're in the middle of the pack and you'll continue to be in the middle of the pack with the 6% rate increase for year one. On the wastewater side, you can see the current rates here in column one or second column and the proposed rates and the percent increases here. On this side, so this is a 3% um, increase on average, or the rate revenue will increase by 3%. You can see that's some variability and how folks will be affected in year one. Again, eh, what happens in the first year of rate study is that you make some adjustments to the cost of service results. You allocate some costs to some customers more than others, just based on changes in behavior, changes in the number of customers and the balance between commercial customers and industrial customers and residential customers. And so you end up with these, um, differences and how it affects, the rate changes affect customers, uh, in year one. But in year two, everybody's affected the same way. So this is just a, uh, an occurrence for year one and doesn't, doesn't continue thereafter. Uh, here's the survey that just isolates wastewater. Uh, this is really the part of your bill that's driving the fact that you have the lowest combined bill. You can see that you're, you're significantly lower than the next closest. And in year two, you'll continue to be significantly lower than any other community for your wastewater rates. And here is the five-year schedule for the wastewater rates that, um, we'll be asking you to vote on. And again, we saw this slide earlier, but just as a reminder, um, even with these in- increases in year one, uh, you'll continue to be the lowest in the pack originally. Yes, you will be raising rates, uh, in subsequent years and years two, three, four, and five, which will probably take you, uh, a bit higher in the pack. I don't expect that it will take you much more than the, beyond the middle of the pack. One thing to keep in mind, and I know this for certain because I work for a few of these utilities, is that they're all raising rates as well. This is not unique to Cloverdale. Um, so as your rates go up, uh, your, the communities around you will be increasing their rates as well. And so, um, you won't be the only ones with your, uh, bills increasing. So that concludes my presentation. Uh, Mr. Kelly, I'll hand it back to you. And after your comments, the, uh, board should, uh, open the public hearing. Uh, this was the presentation preceding the public hearing. So you'll open the public hearing, you'll receive public comments. You'll close the public hearing, you'll tally the votes, the protest votes, and then you will deliberate. And if the tally does not exceed the, um, 50% margin, then you are authorized to proceed with the vote.
Well, thank you, Mark, for your, uh, very detailed overview and presentation on the proposed water rates and sewer rates. Madam Mayor, members of council, at, at this point, my recommendation is, uh, for council to, uh, you know, provide any, uh, clarifying questions or comments you might have, uh, about the presentation or the proposed rates. And then proceed with opening the, the public hearing to receive, uh, public comments. Likewise, uh, when you, it closes the public hearing, uh, recommendation would be to, um, enable your city clerk to conduct a final tabulation of, uh, protests. Uh, we did receive protests on, uh, writ, m- m- many of which were, were written protests on the form that was provided with the Prop 218 notice. And our, our city clerk has been very closely tabulating, uh, all, all of the protests. I think it's also worth noting that we did get some letters of support for the proposed rates, uh, albeit that's a minority. So with that said, I really wanna turn it back to you, council, uh, and, uh, you know, provide the opportunity for you to, to offer any, any questions or comments of, uh, of either, um, Mr. Hildebrand, myself, or our city clerk.
So, um, let's go ahead and bring it to council and then we need to open public comment. I cannot see the hands raised, so Irene, please go ahead and do so, if you see a hand raised.
Yeah, okay, multiple members of the body.
Well, thank you, uh, through the chair. Yeah, uh, Mark, thank you for a, a, an exhaustive and very, you know, thorough, uh, presentation of what our really, what our real situation is. And, um, it's, it's pretty desperate. But I have a question about, um, page 29 in the proposed wastewater enterprise capital projects. It's kind of, I'm kind of surprised, um, I don't see anything about, um, advanced treatment or, uh, also no, you know, or tertiary treatment. I mean, I know that it's going to be mandated at some point when we renew our permit with the regional water quality board. And that's a, a, a big ticket item. Um, so that's not even, that's not even part of this plan. And, you know, that's gonna come up fairly quickly in the next couple of years. So I was wondering if you could, you know, talk a little bit about that, especially, you know, in, and I'm, I have two main concerns. And one is that, you know, we've been reminded again that, you know, we live in California and waters is, water is a, I mean, I, I, there just aren't even any describers how, uh, to how precious it is. And we're gonna need to be, um, i- i- you know, considering what our water portfolio is now. We're, we're going to need to expand the, you know, advanced treatment and reuses for that water because we can't afford to, um, to waste any of it. So we're being reminded right now in a drought how important that is. But also it's just, you know, it's looming on the, um, on the horizon that the regional water quality board is gonna mandate this. And we don't even have this in, i- i- in our capital plan right now. I just was wondering if you could talk a little bit about that.
So did you want me to speak about it on a financial level? Or, uh, obviously I can't speak to it from an engineering or a regulatory level. I'd, I'd defer to Mr. Kelly, uh, for that perspective.
I guess, I, I get, I guess we, we already, you know, know that it is, um, it's gonna be mandated and it's going to have to be in our plan. So I guess, you know, if you could explain why from a financial point of view, we're not, um, already, you know, it's not part of this plan right now.
Sure. From a financial perspective, I, I think that, um, in an ideal world, yes, you would begin to plan for that now. If you, if you know that it's coming, uh, it would be great to start building your reserves so that you can pay for a chunk of it with cash and be in a position where you can qualify for debt um, and to debt finance it and be able to afford your debt payments. Yes, that would be great to start saving now. You see it coming, that'd be wonderful. I, frankly, I think that the city's biking, biting off as much as it can chew at this point with, you know, f- four years of 10% rate increases. That was the, the response that we got from the public back in November. And so, uh, unfortunately, this is a can, uh, that we're kicking down the road. But the good news is that you are, are making, you're going in the right direction. Over the next five years, you are going to be raising your rates by, uh, almost 51%, you know, 51%. So that you're certainly not standing still. And so you're, you're working in the direct direction, probably, you know, according, you know, according to the public as quickly as you can stomach. A- a- and so that's, I guess that would be my response in terms of the reality of addressing rates. But if I had my druthers, you know, from a financial standpoint, yeah, I'd, I'd like, I'd prefer to see the rates be a little of addressing rates. But if I had my druthers, you know, from a financial standpoint, yeah, I'd, I'd like, I'd prefer to see the rates be a little bit higher. And so that when you suddenly have that looming and it's now suddenly only three years away or four years away, that you have a lot of momentum going towards being able to, to pay for that project.
And, and it kind of, can I add to your, your, your response, Mark, to address? I think comes, comes a member Bagby's question about, you know, from an operational perspective. I, I, I do think we need to start at least the preliminary planning process for evaluation wastewater treatment plant to support a, an advanced wastewater treatment facility that very likely could be funded, you know, within our existing operational budget to start. What I would, what I would recommend is a, you know, preliminary feasibility study to, you know, just really kind of the high level look of what's, what's going to be needed to support conversion of the existing site to advanced treatment. You know, one of the critical components to advanced treatment is having necessary land area for storage of treated water. And so very likely, you know, it, it could be that we need to even look at, you know, expanding the site in, that we currently utilize for, for, for storage to support, to support advanced treatment. We can go around the county and look at existing wastewater treatment plants that have advanced treatment, and they all have very significantly sized storage facilities associated with them. And so those are things we could, we could start funding within our, within our operational budget, at least, you know, to start that preliminary work. That's going to support the more detailed engineering work with, you know, really where you kind of start the, the capital funding component of the, the project. So I, I think it is incumbent that we, we do take note of that and, and future budgets, you start planning to do that, that, that early kind of feasibility assessment for, for siding of our advanced water treatment, wastewater treatment facility.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Mark, for answering council members. Bagby, Bagby's question. Any other hands among the council members?
Madam Mayor, yes. Councilmember Walter. And through the chair, Mark, thank you. You answered one of my questions pertaining to grants and how they would be spread out in the particular funds. And David, your last comments as far as advanced treatment goes, I'm really hoping, and, and Mark, I, I know we're, we're not going to count on this, but I'm really hoping that the administration with their infrastructure budget that they're going to be rolling out includes some tertiary or advanced wastewater treatment that we would be in line for. But on page eighteen and page twenty nine, when you had the capital improvement projects and you, and you pushed them out over the five year period, you had dollar amounts equated to those. Those are based on today's pricing, but is there any numbers in there for inflation? Because surely the pricing that we're having now is not going to be the same five years from now.
Yeah, we, we assume three percent inflation.
Okay, so in, in those projections, there's three, three percent. Thank you. And, and that's, that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Lance, Vice Mayor Lance.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to wait until the public comment to make any of my comments or questions.
Okay, so I would like to ask council, should we go ahead and take a three minute break and come back for public comments?
Just a, a point of order. I, I think you're going to get a break later. Mr. Kelly requested one to, in order to confirm the, the tally of the protests. Is that, is that the break that you're referring to? I just want to make sure you don't have to take two breaks in a row.
Okay, so we should go ahead with public comment then.
Madam Mayor, it's, it's, it's really up to you. We can, we, we can take a break now and allow for public comment. And, and then just, it would be a brief time to ensure that our, our city clerk does have the full tally, but it, it, it's really at your discretion.
Okay, well, let's just take a two minute bye break and come right back, please, so that the public can go ahead and, and voice their comments. Thank you. Irene, please go ahead and open public comments. And please be concise. We have three minutes per person to discuss, to make your comments.
Thank you. So the public hearing is open. And please remember, if you have a comment to make, just press the raise hand or star nine if you're calling in. So first we have Nina.
Hi, everybody. I'm Nina Handchep. I, I am the Director of the Chamber of Commerce, but I'm speaking as a homeowner in Cloverdale. And I, the city is, is taxed, sorry, tasked and responsible for the health and the safety of its residents, its businesses and its visitors. And water and wastewater is principal. And I think that we've kicked the can down the road for too long. Several comments were addressed that talked about the lack of transparency and I, I, I don't believe that that's been the case. This is the third public meeting I've been involved with, or just as an, as a attendee. And it's been the exact opposite. And all of the, the comparisons between Cloverdale and the other nearby communities, they're going to, as, as Mark Hildebrand said, they're going to be experiencing the need to upgrade their facilities as well. And it's, that's just a fact of life. Nobody likes to have rate increases. Nobody does. But I think that for the health and welfare and the growth of our city, and I don't mean necessarily in population, but the overall growth, the fact that people want to come here and be part of it. I think that it's incumbent upon us to, to just suck it up and go forward. And that's it.
Thank you, Nina. Next person, please. You're muted, Irene.
Thank you. Next, we have the caller ending in seven zero four three.
Hello, it's Rob Kozlowski. Good evening, Madam. Hi, I wanted to say good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, and in particular, thank Mark and Darren and Mark for the presentations and answers to many of the questions. So I appreciate that. However, I ask, to ask you to reject the proposed rate increase since it's not a good compromise with respect to the sources of funds required for the capital improvement projects. Instead, I'd recommend only adopting the rate increases for the next two years, not the full five years, and in two years come back with what we've achieved in terms of applying for grants and whatnot. The seven major issues posed on or before March twenty second have since ballooned to about a dozen, some of which I'll highlight now. We should consider separating water and wastewater rate increases and stagger them with respect to time. Prioritize capital improvement projects. For example, why hasn't the Cherry Creek Reservoir Project already been started since it's been aged for over sixty years and it's not wine? Yet the Ritter Reservoir Project is being promoted for replacement much sooner than its twenty thirty eight expiration date, assuming lifetimes of water towers are typically fifty years. I'd reject adoption of the so-called scenario three, which simply moves some of the capital projects into the years immediately following the current five year window. We need to keep the big picture in mind in order to slightly lower the latest proposal of increases, which came down from a compounded fourteen percent annual increase to twelve percent annually after one year. On the five percent increase scenario, not a three percent scenario, as the consultant Mark said, the city refused to run that request, which was also based on using the three percent utility tax plus a series of state and federal funds that would hit this annual twelve percent number that's currently proposed. Continue to use existing developers fees, also known as impact fees, for water and sewer infrastructures. And we've been finding a number of impact fees uncovered that had yet been known to the public. That was uncovered and reported by Irene and David yesterday. In terms of resiliency, let's make all fire hydrants safety compliant in terms of water flow. And if need be, seek alternative funds available from the state to bring this known deficiency into compliance. Money should be available for most of this infrastructure work from federal and state grants. We seek transparency on the dollars coming in and where they're going. The city must assume success and security in government monies to fund these critical infrastructure projects, such as the chlorine contact tank, which Darren did a great job explaining. Supervisor James Gore and California State Mike McGuire, who I talked to both today at their offices, are willing to help with this grant writing. And residents, of course, are willing to step up and donate their time to help write some of these grants. I'd recommend using that recently approved and permanent three percent utility tax for water infrastructure as well, instead of bolstering the general fund. I found it interesting at times that we heard we can't do what we can't do.
You have to pass your three minutes. You need to wrap up.
I'm wrapping up. I was also saying also the bar charts showed after year one, not after year five, which was the highest. My comments are not about no rate increase. It's about no exorbitant rate increase. It's about fairness and transparency. It's about respecting the financial hardships of Cloverdaleans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Next, we have Helen.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for the presentation. I have not attended all eight meetings, but I have definitely attended some. And I know that staff and consultants have done their homework. I appreciate the presentation. I really appreciate Darren's down to earth, on the ground interpretation of the situation for us. I work with pumps and tanks at my work. And I understand what he's proposing is going to save us money in the long run. I think having duplicate tanks at these reservoir sites is imperative. The coating the tanks is imperative. It's going to save us money in the long run. I think that the consultant and the staff have done their homework and come up with the best possible solution for meeting the needs of everybody in the community. And I think it's time for the community to step up and realize that we need to sustain the infrastructure we have. I am a proponent of low or very slow growth, which means we can't count on developers for impact fees. We need to do it ourselves. The one question I have left is, I know there's more to this picture. The reservoirs that, that support the neighborhood I'm in are not even mentioned on the capital improvement projects, but I realize that they're old and they will need to be coated. And I realize there's a lot of emotion and people don't want to pay more. I don't really want to pay more either, but you get what you pay for. And we need to do it now. My parents live in a community where the water is undrinkable. And right now our water is very good. And I can't think of a topic that's more important than water. And I'm glad to see that the city council is doing something to improve our water infrastructure and protect it for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, I see no hands raised, so you wish to close public comment.
Please, those attending, make sure that you raise your hand so that you could participate and give your comment. Any other hands raised?
Yes, we have one from Angela.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm on a different device, so I'm sorry. I don't know how to work this one very well. So it was really interesting to see the presentation tonight. I've really been against the water increase. Honestly, it doesn't even affect me. I don't have city water. But I'm more concerned about my fellow community members and, you know, people being pushed to have to pay a higher bill and conserve more. I, I really appreciate knowing that new development is going to be paying for their own infrastructure and their own maintenance. I think that it would be nice to maybe what Rob said earlier, do this for a couple of years, see what we've done to what, how successful it's been, where we're at, what our numbers are, how, how much it went up as far as the community members that are actually paying a water bill. And just revisit it. I don't think that, I, I don't think that we have to jump into a long term, five year plan or, or longer for that matter. I think that if we just do a couple of years and just revisit it, it, it would be good. I think this will help help our city and help our community and most definitely the failing infrastructure that everybody is so concerned about. I really appreciate Darren's presentation as well. And I think that Mark did a great job. My, my only concern is that when you're dealing with the general public, sometimes you've got to put things into layman's terms so that the general public could understand and you don't lose their attention. It was a very long, long, detailed presentation. Perhaps this is something that you guys can think about for a future meeting when you're dealing with such a heavy discussion is to possibly shorten it up and, and, you know, get some of it into layman's terms for the general public. But overall, I do appreciate all of you breaking it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next we have Craig.
Hi, hi, my name is Craig Corney. And, and you know, I'd like to, like to say, you know, thanks for everybody that's put this together. I also think that, you know, maybe it's not, not thought out quite as well as it's presented and, and that it might be good to consider just working on the rates for the next year or two and, and giving not only staff, but, but the community time to weigh in. Yep, the, the rest of the staff and the rest of the community. I think, I think, you know, in all fairness, a lot of the community hasn't had a chance to, to speak up. And, you know, the rate increase proposed in November was obviously, you know, didn't, didn't work out just because there was such a, a public outcry. I think this time there was less of a public outcry and it might be because myself and others involved didn't do a mailing across the city. And I think that it would be really, really good just to involve them and, and see if it doesn't make sense to figure out how to do this and how to do this where it doesn't hurt. I mean, we had a, you know, we have a, a, a fair group of people that say they've had to move away from Cloverdale because of the rate increase. We had a large percentage that said that this would create issues as far as choosing between paying water or buying food. And it just between paying water or buying food, and it just doesn't, you know, it's just really difficult. I completely understand and support the fact that we need to have clean water and wastewater systems that work with fair amounts of reserves. But I also, you know, look at this presentation, and, you know, it bothers me that we're talking about stuff that may or may not come up seven or eight years from now, as far as need, yet the reality is, is that, you know, this rate increase is the next five years. So I don't understand why we talk about something that has no, that's not germane to today's conversation. Anyway, thank you, and I hope the council gives us some thought. You know, there's a lot of people that have issues with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Next person, please.
Next, we have Debbie Howe.
Good evening, everyone. I completely support the need for infrastructure, but I also support the need for applying for grants from the state and the federal government. There is a lot of infrastructure money coming down. I realize grants are hard and a pain to deal with, but it would definitely be able to pay for some projects, not all, not as a source of funding, ongoing funding, but one-time funding, and it could be very useful and reduce the actual cost that the consumer has to pay in the short run. I also support the idea of doing a one-, two-year rate increase and reevaluating and receiving updates on progress made on the capital projects on the presentation. Thank you, thank you. Great job of the presentation, and I applaud all of the work that's been done.
Any other hands, Irene?
Yes, we have a hand from Molly.
Please.
Hi, I would just like to point out that I am actually a grant writer for Sonoma Water, and a lot of times with these funding opportunities, they do not allow, they do not allow you to apply for deferred maintenance projects. So just keep that in mind, that some of these projects that you need to apply for that to rebuild the infrastructure and make it better might not be eligible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this public forum at this moment?
I'm just scanning. Yeah, scanning the list, and I don't see any more hands.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Walter.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm just going to ask our city manager to take a second and explain once again why we're doing the five-year forecast and what will happen on an annual basis as we move forward through the five-year program.
Madam Mayor, with your permission, I'll respond to.
Please go ahead.
That's a great question, Councilmember Walter, and it certainly reflects some of the comments that are being made. We talked a little bit about the process that we've went through. In order to adopt rates, we've had to go through this extensive Prop 218 process. And there's a reason why you don't want to do that every year, you know, just the printing of the new Prop 218 notices themselves, and the effort of preparing a study to support the Prop 218 notice is quite expensive, and the ratepayers bear that. It's really from a financial perspective, it's, I think it's much better to look at a five-year planning horizon rather than a two-year planning horizon. As you can see from the list of capital projects, there's a significant number of those projects occur in year three, year four, and year five. And the intent being that you raise rates now to be able to start building that savings account, those reserves, to fund those projects in year three, year four, and year five. And so that's kind of the basis of looking at a five-year planning horizon is really the project, being able to collect the adequate revenue and being able to then, you know, fund the projects that are identified in your capital improvement program. We don't have the revenue today to carry out a major CIP mark, so we need that time to be able to collect the revenue. And council always has the authority, it's a good reminder that assuming you decide to adopt the rates tonight, that what you're doing is you're setting the maximum rates, meaning you can't charge anything greater than what has been identified in the Prop 218 notice. But at any time, you can charge a lower rate. And, you know, it's a great opportunity really in the five-year time horizon is to maybe year three, really do kind of a, I don't want to call it a full-blown rate analysis, but do a rate check-in, look at where we are with our reserves, look at our capital projects, see, and check to see that we have adequate funding available to be able to carry out those projects, and also to see where we're at with respect to applying for and receiving grants, and how that factors into funding the capital improvement projects again over that five-year time horizon. But I want to offer the opportunity for our rate consultant, Mark Hildebrand. He, you know, he does this every day of his life. This is his profession, and he may be able to offer some additional perspective.
Well, before you do that, Mark, before you jump in, I guess, David, what I'm getting at is the council's ability to review the rates either on an annual basis or every two years, especially now that some infrastructure money may be coming. We could take a look at it in two years at little expense because we won't have to do the noticing, but if we decide to lower the rates, we can do it. And I guess that's basically, we're not locked into five years, we're just setting the max of what we can do. So that's the point I was trying to make.
Yeah, and I have nothing further to add. Mr. Kelly said everything I would have said.
Councilmember Lance, please. Vice Mayor Lance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Considering the comments that I heard tonight, I'm cutting out a lot of what I had to say because I don't know if it's even necessary. Sounds like we have a little more support than I was expecting, and all the up-to-date proof of what we're doing being correct doesn't seem to be as necessary. I'll just go real quick and tell you that I did rate studies on several that are on our list, plus others in our area. With our increases and the increases that they have done in the past couple of weeks, we're actually looking better than the graphs showing you currently. So we are still or will be paying less than everyone else in the area, except for a couple. And with those couple, there are cities that are not maintaining or were saving to maintain their own water systems. I called people that I know that work there, and they don't have things set apart or money set away for capital improvement projects, and they're not saving for any of that. So it's like, we have this way of you can either drive a car with bald tires, or you can start saving money and be prepared so when your tires go bald, you can buy new ones. I spoke to our water treatment and our water area. I went through the entire list with them. I would have actually asked for more money if I was them because there's a lot of projects on here that I think are necessary, that we are kicking down the road. So I think this rate is actually lower than I would have proposed. The reason we're here is because we've been kicking the can down the road for the past 25 years plus. Those tanks were there when I was here as a kid, they're here now, still here now, and they are failing, they've been failing for 20 years. The Cherry Creek tank is leaking all over the place, and if it goes down, our town is literally screwed. It reminds me of the saying, the proper planning and preparation prevents piss-poor performance. And that's where we're at right now. And so we are going to be that change. I'm not in here to kick the can down the road, I'm here to do a rate. I've been called a fiscal canary, and it's because I like to live within my means, and I'm going to maintain a budget here that is our budget, and grants are extra to put on top of it. And I appreciate everyone's comments and everyone's concerns. Some of the false narratives and information that was out there is kind of sad to see that people were, same things that weren't true. However, I think that Mark Hildebrand has done a great job to show that it's about a 60% increase over five years, and that's minimal, especially when you look at what you get for it and what everyone else around us is doing. Water is very precious, and we need to keep it ours and not have it through the county or have it fail.
Melanie, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add. That's kind of what I've been saying for the last several meetings. I mean, we cannot continue to defer these maintenance costs, and it is, this is very much like a car. The price of the car is not the monthly payment. The price of the car is the insurance and the maintenance, and what it's going to cost you over time, including what it costs for you to park the car, because whether you own a home or you rent a home, you're still, you know, you're paying overhead to park that car. And I think that that's what, that's unfortunately what previous councils have not considered in the last 20 or so years that I've lived here and the meetings that I've attended. So this is necessary, and I appreciate, you know, Mark Hildebrand coming right out and saying, you know, by waiting, we've actually cost ourselves more. So it's really time for us to lead on this issue and act and start, you know, protecting and investing in our water treatment and our wastewater treatment, and we need to continue to consider investing in the future. And I really appreciate the way he described the grant money, is that it's one-time money. And the difference between, the reason that the rate increases are so important is because it is predictable revenue, and we can then plan for the known expenses that we're going to have and plan for the rate of inflations. And that's what Mark's company has done so effectively for us. So, yeah, I'm going to support this item tonight, as I think it's important for our future and our kids' futures, and I hope the rest of the council can support it as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby. And I tell you, I come from a community where the can was kicked for more than 30 years, and to this day, even though we have an incredible amount of rain, we don't have water available. And why is that? Because deferred maintenance. And deferred maintenance means that you have to have interruption of service, and that's the last thing that our community needs, interruption of service. And this is what makes us a first oil country, is the access to clean and healthy water. So I ask the council to please go forth with this resolution, and let's move this forward.
Madam Mayor, if we can, check in with our city clerk, Irene. Irene, if you can share with us if you need additional time, or are you ready to report on the, you know, where we are relative to our number of protests, whether we met the threshold to, you know, put a stay on the rate increase.
Thank you, City Manager Kelly. I could just take a couple minutes just to make sure that no other protest letters were received, and then I'll report out.
Okay, so two minutes. Come back. May we call on the participants in council, please?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Did want to report that we did not receive the majority protest. I will say, just for the record, we did tally 530 protest letters, and we did receive them with, many with comments in both English and Spanish.
Thank you. We have to wait for Councilmember Bagby.
Madam Mayor, can I request that maybe we review the process on what it would have taken to stop this rate increase from going forward? What the procedure is?
Okay, Jose, could you address this before we move to the next item and resolution?
Absolutely, and I think our city manager also has the final number, but normally what it takes is 50% plus one of your water accounts in order to come in and fill out the majority protest. I think that, then Mark did a great job in the presentation, kind of going through the process. We're not talking about a tax, as far as like taxes where people have to go out and vote yes or no. In this case, Proposition 218 requires a majority protest, so you actually have to submit a protest letter. I think Irene mentioned it was 500, and I'm sorry, Irene, it was 500 and, how many did you get, 590?
530.
530. And David, how many would it have taken? And I wrote this down earlier, but what was the, around the halfway point?
It would have taken about 1,620.
So we're pretty far away from a majority protest.
And just for an educational, from an educational standpoint, is it the property owner or the registered water holder, for example, in a rental?
The way that I always recommend kind of counting them, usually you could set out the rules beforehand, but in order to just be fair across the board, it was really either if we received a renter or a property owner, we would count them as protests.
I just wanted to make sure the public's aware of how we do the process and how it's set up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, resolution?
And Madam Mayor, and members of council, again, if you're inclined to support the items tonight, there's two resolutions in your packet, one that specifically addresses the water service rate schedule, and a second resolution that covers the wastewater or sewer water, sewer rate schedule.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to offer the resolution for the water service rates by title only.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
A resolution of the City Council, the City of Cloverdale, adopting a new water service rate schedule in accordance with Proposition 218, California Constitutional Article, I don't know what that roman numeral is, so Jose is going to have to correct me, and rescinding Resolution Number 29-2016, adopted April 26, 2016. 13D, thank you.
Councilmember Bagby?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lance?
Hi.
Councilmember Walter?
Hi.
And Mayor Cruz?
Hi.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to offer the resolution by title only.
Thank you. Second?
City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Dash 2021, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, adopting a new sewer slash water rate schedule in accordance with Proposition 218, California Constitution, Article Number 13D, and rescinding Resolution Number 30 Dash 2016, adopted April 26, 2016. And rescinding Resolution Number 30 Dash 2016, adopted April 26, 2016.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lamb?
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your participation. And thank you to all the participants and all the people who submitted their views and concerns about this item. Now we're going to go ahead and move to conduct interviews with the position of council member. And by resolution, appoint a candidate to fill the vacancy for a partial term ending December 2022. And again, we are going to conduct it in a manner that is going to be uniform across the board. And David, could you please present this?
Absolutely, Mayor, delighted to. And I'll just give a brief background on this item. On May 3 this year, we received a resignation by former Mayor Councilmember Jason Turner. Subsequent to that resignation, the City Council at the regular meeting on May 12 considered a couple of options, including whether to appoint a qualified individual to fill the vacancy or whether to conduct a special election. At that council meeting, council decided that it was in the best interest of the community to conduct, to fill the vacancy by appointment through an interview process of qualified applicants. Subsequent to the meeting, staff developed an application packet that was published with the application close period on June 1. Upon the, upon the closure of the application period, the city received five qualified applicants or five qualified, or five applications from five qualified applicants that were reviewed thoroughly by our, our city clerk. The applications that were submitted for the vacancy were submitted by five candidates, including Jenny Candelaria Orr, Maita Emmons, Nicole Garcia Hinchcliffe, Joe Paula and Eric Sanders. And copies of their applications are included in the agenda packet. As, as staff previously shared with council, the interview process is required to be conducted in open session and available for the community to watch. In preparation for the, the meeting tonight, the staff developed a set of questions for your consideration. Those, those questions were also available in the packet and were available to the applicants to review prior to this meeting. There are, there are four sets of questions. One for each council member. And our recommendation is that the mayor appoint the order of who, which council member asked which question. And then you follow that by an opportunity to allow the applicant the opportunity to make closing remarks. Our, our recommendation for conducting the interviews tonight is to conduct the interviews, you know, one applicant at a time. So you, you're welcome, council, to modify that if you so desire. And, and give each of the applicants a total of 15 minutes for the interview process, consisting of three minutes per question, followed by the, the final remarks and which would complete the 15-minute interview process. You may want to take a brief break in between, but that's up to council if you want to conduct, you know, brief, brief breaks. One of the decisions is whether you want to, you know, decide the rotation of the interviews, interviewees. General consideration would be to do it in alphabetical order. But you can do it in any way you, you see fit. With that said, just the, the recommendation is at the end of the interview process tonight, council deliberate on the candidate and hopefully build a consensus around a nominee. And if you're inclined, appoint an individual to, to fill the vacancy. If, if you do take that action, the next action on the agenda tonight is to conduct the oath of office and have that member join you at the, at the virtual dance. So with that said, Madam Mayor, I, I turn it back to you. Again, with the recommendation, you, you assign the questions to each of your, your respective colleagues. And, and decide which order in which you would like to interview the candidates tonight. Madam Mayor, that's it. End of my staff's report.
And Jose, I want to make sure that it is correct for me to instruct council that no follow-up questions will be allowed from the first question.
That is, that's definitely up to the council as far as the process goes, Mayor. And that's, that's perfectly fine. It keeps it very, just very fair to ask the same questions for everybody. And if there was a follow-up question, then my recommendation would be ask that, that same type of question to everybody else. It makes it a lot cleaner if we just stick to the questions that are there. But again, it is the process of the council. There's no right or wrong way to interview candidates right now as far as this process. There's nothing in the law that says how, but, but that seems appropriate.
For, for purposes of transparency and uniformity, I prefer that we do that. And the first question has been assigned to Councilmember Bagby. The second one to Vice Mayor Lamb. Number three to Councilmember Walter. And I will ask number four. I suggest that we go ahead and do it in alphabetical order. So we will start with Jenny Candelaria. Thank you.
Moving Jenny up to the panel.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to apply for this position and to submit your application. Melanie?
Your first question is to describe your background and how you are uniquely qualified to fill the vacancy on the city council.
Thank you. And again, I want to say thank you guys for having me here tonight. I really feel it's, it's wonderful to be able to apply for this position, especially since I ran for this last November and, and in a really great showing, in my opinion. Came in first runner-up, so that was super exciting. And when this opportunity arose, definitely it was something that I wanted to go for. Over the course of my campaign last year, there were kind of a couple of things that I've thought about since November. And one of them was, I know that there is definitely a discussion about like experience whenever it comes to being an elected official or having anything background-wise that deals with, you know, city council business. And, you know, I have been serving the public for 14 years as a teacher at Rington Valley Middle School. And, you know, a lot of the same skill set, I feel coincides with being a city council member. You know, objectivity is super, super, super important, especially whenever, you know, you are dealing with the public. It's not necessarily your individual opinions that necessarily matter. It's making sure that you can be open to other opinions. You know, I teach 165, but last year it was 174 kids every single day. And, you know, your opinion is not necessarily ever at the forefront. And that's how I feel, you know, a really great skill that you can bring or that I can bring as a city council member. Diplomacy is incredibly important when dealing with all different, you know, populations, opinions, et cetera, parents in my realm of expertise. Transparency is very important as well. You know, being a teacher, you need to make sure that your decisions are very clear. How you came to those decisions are incredibly clear. My analytical way of thinking, looking at pros and cons, looking at, you know, effects of things and how that might impact the city of Cloverdale. And lastly, I actually do have some experience with budgeting, be it, again, it's on the educational front, but looking at categorical spending. I've been on my school site council off and on for the 14 years that I've been teaching there. The second thing that kind of I reflected on from my campaign last year was the fact that, you know, relatively, I've lived here for seven years, so I know I'm kind of new to the game a bit. But, you know, my husband and I, we have a three-year-old. We want to raise her here. We're excited to be here. And I'm really looking forward to, you know, serving Cloverdale the best way that I can.
Thank you very much, Jenny. Todd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jenny, what do you consider are the top one or two challenges currently facing the city? And what are the key steps you would take immediately to address them as a newly elected council member?
So I think tonight was a great example. And I, I don't know if I'll use the same analogy, but it's, it's just the deferring of things that has been happening, you know, for the last 20-plus years. And be it, again, I've only been here to witness about seven of them. But I think a big issue that I would love to tackle is just planning for the future. And I think both of those, my first one is looking at the hazard mitigation plan. And for those of you who watched the forums last year, I know it sounds a little bit like a broken record, but the fact that we're in the last step of implementing, like and actually approving the hazard mitigation plan. There are some infrastructure projects. There are, you know, we've already talked, you guys talked about grant proposals, things like that, getting CAL FIRE, oh goodness, CAL OES funding, looking at FEMA funding. And I think that mitigation plan is really going to help us open the door for other opportunities for funds, instead of necessarily it coming from the general fund or other areas with especially a budget so tight. I really want to work hard to try and secure alternative sources of funding. I think that's going to be incredibly important, especially whenever it comes to drought, fire mitigation, all of these different things that we are going to be facing and have already faced, unfortunately. Within the last, you know, few years, wildfire and drought being the top two in my head. Looking at, you know, down the road about what we can do about dealing with our water supply, looking at the Russian River, the fact that, you know, we have the Potter Valley Water Project, things like that, and just really trying to help mitigate those potential impacts. And making sure that we're really trying hard to plan for the future. So that's something like our water rate increases that we're seeing now don't necessarily have to happen again. We can, we can plan for that in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walter.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Jenny, first of all, thank you for putting in your application. It's greatly appreciated. Jenny, this question revolves around communicating. What, what action would you take to help improve communicating the city council's position on major or significant policy decisions such as a development project to the community?
Now, I have to admit, this is definitely tricky. And peeking behind the curtain last year, trying to, to figure out ways in order to really effectively communicate with the public, especially when like, let's say, the hazard mitigation, there were, what, 158 survey responses out of how many residents we have in Cloverdale? I think for me, something that I feel like I could do well would be really trying to expand my social media presence as much as possible. I know that that's definitely provides a little bit of a double-edged sword and the fact that, you know, there needs to be a decorum set forward, some type of, you know, relationship that you have with the public whenever it comes to being, you know, able to type something as opposed to necessarily speaking with someone in person. But COVID, I feel, has really between Zoom sessions and things like that been really invaluable. I also think, you know, setting meeting times, I know the homeless advisory committee meeting was at 5:00 PM this last time, which was great. But I think also making sure that we have, or I would think that, you know, making sure we have meetings at different times kind of staggered within different committees to make sure that people are actually able to attend them, since everyone obviously works on different schedules. That would be something that I think would be super important. But also I think reaching out to different organizations throughout the community. La Familia Sana, look at, you know, Resilient Cloverdale has had a great online presence. If you look at, you know, Melanie Hall and the Senior Center, there are a lot of other organizations and pillars within our community that I think we really could utilize whenever it came to disseminating information about, you know, what the city council is either, you know, anything upcoming or anything that we want to get out to the public.
Thank you.
I am for kind of quickly, I'm sorry.
And the last question is, describe how you're going to foster positive intra-council working relationships and build consensus on policy decisions without violating the Brown Act, of course.
That is something that I obviously am very new to. And I love the idea of, you know, I obviously have been listening to the entire meeting and having like team building sessions. I do think that that is incredibly important. I have worked with countless families and fellow teachers. And I think being able to be professional is something that really I feel like I can bring to the table in the sense of, you know, it's not necessarily, again, and it might sound a bit redundant, so I apologize, but it's not just about me. It's about all of us making that decision. And whether there is compromise involved, wherever it is, just outlining our arguments and making sure, you know, all of the council members actually can see where we are coming from, what is our evidence, what is our reasoning? But I've had a lot of experience working in situations where you may not see eye to eye. I mean, like, that's just obviously human nature. But I pride myself in the fact that, you know, I'm not stuck in my own opinions. I definitely am fluid in where I stand on issues and, and, you know, different arguments that come to the table. So really, it's just that professionalism that I really think that I can bring to build those intra-council relationships.
Thank you very much. And please remind me, David, now they give the closing statement or at the end?
That's correct, Mayor, is this is opportunity for the candidates to provide a closing statement or, you know, cover anything additional that, that, you know, they may want to add to to their, to their, you know, highlight their background or their experience.
Okay, so go ahead, Jenny.
Okay. So I think the main thing that I took away from last year was the fact that I have a very, very, very strong passion in serving this community. I've already started my beginning membership of Qantas and did the book giveaway, which was so wonderful. And I want to be even more involved, especially with Isla, with us having established, you know, buying our home, setting up our family here. My mom and dad and brother literally live two streets away from us. You know, this is a community that I'm going to be in for an incredibly long time. It's a community that, yes, I know that I'm new to compared to many people who have lived here for generations. But I'm very, very passionate and I am incredibly hardworking. And I will work very hard for the people of Cloverdale to make sure that we're planning for the future, that we don't run into deferment issues, that we are looking at emergency preparedness, that we are concerned and conserving about our water. And actually, one thing I didn't get a chance to say, which I was really happy to hear that you guys have voted to be within the Snow Memorial and Saving Water Partnership, which I was really interested in learning more about. There are so many things that are out there for us to help businesses with water conservation, individuals, I mean rebate programs, all of these great things that I very much want to be a part of. And I just appreciate the opportunity for being able to even interview for this position. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Candelaria Orr. And we'll move on to our next candidate. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And this would be Ms. Emmons.
We should see Ms. Emmons shortly.
To top executives, two years at Citizens National Bank, Los Angeles. Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Emmons. We have questions that we are going to start asking. And the, the order is for Councilmember Bagby to ask the first one. Councilmember? And the order is for Councilmember Bagby to ask the first one, Councilmember Lance second, Councilmember Walter the third, and I'll ask the last question. After that, you will have a moment to do a closing comment. Thank you for applying and welcome. Councilmember Bagby, please.
Hello, Maida. Thanks so much for applying. I have your first question, and we're asking you to describe your background and how you are uniquely qualified to fill the vacancy on the city council.
Can you unmute Ms. Emmons, Irene? It's Emmons?
Am I on now? Okay.
Yes, you are. Thank you very much.
Sorry. I've been in Cloverdale since 2014. I've always worked as an executive assistant for top executives, Citizen National Bank, IBM, Varco International for 17 years, which was an oil well drilling and manufacturing firm in Irvine. I also worked as the Employee Assistance Program Manager there. I did counseling for alcohol and drug-addicted employees to the point of referral in the community. I worked for 12 years for Focus on the Family, which is a global Christian nonprofit ministry in Pomona and in Colorado Springs. I reported to the EVP and the VP of Public Policy. I attended Pomona High School and took special classes of interest at UCLA and took courses in corporate long-range planning and general semantics, and took alcohol and drug addiction training at the University of Utah. I was a Republican delegate to the El Paso County and Colorado State Conventions for several years. I served on the Park Haven Town Home Homeowners Association and was instrumental in getting bids for and getting very large and important projects done. I attended Holy Apostles Catholic Church, participating in the music program, and that's where I was confirmed. I was a member of the St. George's Episcopal Church Vestry and Music Program. I founded a five-piece flute ensemble by the name of Cinnamon Tea, ran that for 10 years at the point where I moved here in 2014, and it is still going. I'm a member of PEO in Colorado Springs and now here in the Healsburg Chapter. I don't know if you've heard of PEO. It is a philanthropic educational association providing help for education for women. I was a member of the Healsburg Course until COVID-19 hit. I attended Good Shepherd Episcopal Church in town for a period of time. I now attend the Alexander Valley Community Fellowship, and I participate in the music ministry. I've sponsored films at the Alexander Valley Film Festival and plays at CPAC and am a returning member at the Chamber of Commerce. I would hope to contribute with my seasoned citizen perspective and administrative abilities. My husband, Joe, passed away from Alzheimer's in June of 2018. Since then, I've been blessed with a gentleman partner named Leo. We live in a granny flat I had built on my daughter's property downtown. I own two other single-family homes in Cloverdale. Both of my daughters live in town. I have two grandchildren and two great.
Thank you, Ms. Emmons. Your time for this question is over. Thank you very much. And I'll pass it on to Councilmember Lance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Maida, for applying to this position. Your question is going to be this. What do you consider are the top one or two challenges currently facing the city? And what are the key steps you would take immediately to address them as a newly elected council member?
Two concerns of mine with regard to what our city is or might be facing, of course, in addition to the homelessness, the fire safety, the drought, the budget, the COVID, and the reopening, the water rates. By the way, I certainly support the increase in the water rates and the open borders and so forth, would be our support for law enforcement and first responders and their families. In light of the current efforts around the country to defund the police, I would be in definite favor of defending the police. My other concern would be if critical race theory is now being taught or would in the future be taught in our schools. I would definitely like to have very in-depth conversations about that, as I feel that there are some real dangers in that. And that includes, along with the CRT, the white supremacist issue. I'm just very concerned about what could be coming into the curriculum in our schools. I don't think any of that's here now, but it does concern me for the future. And I would really like to be involved in that in any way. At this point, I don't know how I could be involved, but I have plenty of time, and I'm willing to give my perspective on those things. Just my life has been longer than some of yours. And I'm old school, but I'm also progressive. So I think I would like to be able to help in any way that would, that would be directed.
Thank you, Maida.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Walter, please.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Maida, thank you very much for applying. This question has to do with communication. And the question goes, what action would you take to help improve communicating the city council's position on a major or significant policy decision such as development project to the community?
Well, obviously, I don't know too much about that right now. From my viewpoint, at this, at this time, it looks pretty good. I was able to find out that there was an open position on the council. I've been very aware of what's been going on with the disputes over the water rate increases. I think there's been a lot of misinformation out there. I would be willing to help in mailings or with communications on the computer, any way that I could be helpful. But right, actually, right now, I think it's pretty good, or else I wouldn't have known what I knew as of today.
Thank you very much. And the next question is, describe how you are going to foster positive intra-council working relationships and build consensus on policy issues, sorry, policy decisions.
Yes. Well, I was tickled to hear that there's some talk about having a retreat with a facilitator in team building. That sounds like an excellent idea. I don't know that we need to spend $10,000 on it, but I'm a good listener. I'm open to all kinds of opinions. I like to give my opinions in an honest fashion. I want to hear others, and I want to be heard and build consensus in whatever way is possible, without hard feelings, without, you know, unnecessary disputes, just honest, open, active, listening behavior.
Thank you very much. And now, would you please provide us with a closing statement?
Yes, ma'am. Well, my hope and prayer is that we would work together to seek truth. I think that today, there is a lot of division regarding my truth or your truth, but I would hope to be able to work together with the council and the community members to seek what really and truly is best for our community. On the water thing, it looks to me, from what I heard tonight, that we really did put it off too long. And perhaps the first figures that were provided might have been better. But we went back, evidently, the mark went back and reworked those figures and pushed things farther out. I don't think pushing those things out farther out for different council members to deal with in the future is a good idea. So anyway, I'm happy about that. My faith is Christian. I'm a follower of Christ. I believe in his forgiveness, and I believe we're all created equal. My affiliation is Republican, and I would say, come, let us reason together.
Thank you very much for your time, for your application, and for being candid with us. Now, we will go to the next applicant, and that would be Nicole Garcia Hinchliffe. Welcome, Nicole. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
There I am. If there was ever a meeting to show a example of what council life will be like, this was the meeting.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you for applying. Thank you for your dedication. Please go ahead, Councilmember Bagby.
Sure. So Nicole, please describe your background and how you are uniquely qualified to fill the vacancy on the city council.
Well, good evening, council. My qualifications include my military service, which I served in our United States Air Force from 2012 to 2018. I was enlisted in the Civil Engineering Squadron, where emergency preparedness and response to be deployed ready is instilled in military training and is very necessary to be successful in the service. So my military time taught me service, dedication, military contingency, and the importance of honoring a chain of command as well as a government structure. Also, my education in agriculture business, where I have become efficient in marketing, communication, as well as soil science. I hold the basis of running and operating a business, being a part of my family's business since I was 15 years old. Now, I hold the title of CFO. So I understand budgets and planning with creativity. My husband and I are also in the starting phases of establishing a nonprofit in Cloverdale called Promise Land Farms. So this is where our mission is to combat food insecurity and to educate the public on sustainable agriculture. So as a wife and a mother, I have our next generation in the forefront of my mind, and they need our voice and a town that they are proud to inherit. And so last I want to touch base on is my family is also in the process of purchasing a very well-known and beloved business in town. So therefore, our roots are being established. And I believe these traits I possess prove a very transparent, honest, and educated, and available candidate to join our city council.
Thank you, Nicole. Councilmember Lance, please.
Thank you, Nicole. Here's your first question from me. What do you consider are the top one or two challenges currently facing the city? And what are the key steps you would take immediately to address them as a newly elected council member?
After some research and what I've seen in our community and keeping up with current council agenda minutes, I have, the first challenge I feel the city faces is fire protection and preparedness. I have actually been invited to join our Resilient Cloverdale Committee. And by working with that team to continue the streamlined communication delivered to constituents is what I would like to focus on. We have already witnessed multiple fires arise in our town this month alone. And so I want to make sure that we're prepared. It's unfortunate now that it's now a season and not a phenomenon, but I have learned that preparing for contingency will only work for our benefit. Steps I would take immediately, finding out if our residents have an evacuation plan per neighborhood. If they know who to contact should a fire arise or situation arise by having discussion groups with partnerships through the Senior Center, Veterans Hall, church organizations, and our circus fair. The more information available, the better. I plan to have a fire, actually, excuse me, I would also plan to have the fire department involved as well with a hands-on approach that I'm more than happy to help assist with. This is something that we would do on a regular basis on our military base. We would have security forces and the fire department perform routine examples of what to do should an emergency happen here locally on base. The second challenge I foresee and I've seen is commerce amongst our businesses. After speaking with some of our business owners, the need for commerce is very transparent. But a need beyond that is a workforce. I envision a job fair hosted by our council with local educators to help our workforce with resume building, help build a database of available jobs, and encourage those who need employment. Also encouraging our high school with a mentorship program with the fire department, police department, and local businesses available to mentor in their career fields. Something about wearing a name tag when you enter a situation brings confidence and to be proud to belong. I'd also like to add that one more need to communicate water conservation and how our community can help mitigate the current state of emergency of the drought. And on our first comment, I fully support in the radio read upgrade, excuse me, upgrade mentioned, to be able to have that real-time statistics so our city may be aware of usage and ways to limit water waste.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you very much, Nicole. Councilmember Walters?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nicole, I want to thank you for submitting your application. And this question has to do with communications. And what action would you take to help improve communicating the city's council's position on major or significant policy decisions such as a development project to the community?
So as we know, we have two very prominent local news outlets, the newly named SoCo News Cloverdale and our Cloverdale Connect. So working with those two outlets, I think they reach a multitude of our community. And I believe that if we were to maybe negotiate space for putting new resolutions or decisions on policy, I think that would be, that would be a great idea to streamline communication. Also, social media. Social media, we need to utilize what we have in our age that we're in. So I noticed when I ran last year, by having social media available to me when planning events, seeing posts and engagement on the posts, that really encouraged more interaction. So having a Like page, updating our website also with easily accessible website navigation, and by posting current approvals, agenda resolutions, and current events that are user-friendly and straightforward. The city currently posts the agenda on the website and outside city hall, that is, to my knowledge. But I believe we can reach our community on a grander scale by utilizing more digitized resources to get input and involvement. I'm also available to host and help plan community outreach and table talk to hear from our city. I have participated in the Coffee with the Mayor discussions, and those are a great resource. So by supporting that type of event, we can only grow the transparency. And hopefully soon, we can have Coffee with the Mayor in person at Plank. How great would it be to have a city who is confident in knowing where our council's vision is and where our members stand on certain issues? So I'm all for transparency and communication.
Thank you, Nicole. Please go ahead and try to describe how you're going to foster positive intra-council working relationships and build consensus on policy decisions.
So research and diligence are my strengths, thanks to my love for knowledge and my military time. And so by approaching each decision with those being my strengths and with the mindset of not my own agenda, but of the city's needs, I believe we can have a lot of positive resolutions amongst our council. Madam Mayor, you mentioned a need for clear communication within the body, and I wholeheartedly agree with team building and education and the unifying vision for Cloverdale. Something that I'm used to is being in the military, you know, you can't pick your coworkers or your bosses. you know, you can't pick your coworkers or your bosses in the military, unfortunately. So the need for team building and for workshops is vital because outside of the workforce, you actually have common ground. And that can bring such an inclusion and a strength, not necessarily a friendship, but a strength with communicating with each other. And so I do want to mention that there can be unity amongst the diverse council. A diverse council will lead the way for inclusion in our city. And so we've seen inclusionary policy in cities like Roanoke Park and Hildesburg. The movement for inclusionary policy established is a huge motive I have, and it starts here in local government. So by bringing my generation's perspective to the council, I'm hopeful for the chance to represent families like mine and to enrich our community with the skill set and my motivation. To me, this isn't just a title. It's a service, like the day I sworn to serve our country. I will serve our city with the same excellence and integrity as you all do. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. And I would like for you to take this moment to give us a closing statement and perhaps other issues or other thoughts that you would like to share with us.
One thought and motivation I did want to touch base on was my heart for combating food insecurity. This is the reason why my husband and I have started our nonprofit, is because we believe in this vision. And by, by being present on workshops with daily acts and by submitting applications to places like the living room, where they have a garden for families, for single mothers, by being a part of Crown's ministry, where we work with the Athena House and housing women who have been abused and have been through a system. I think that by bridging the gap of service, that is my heart. Not just feeding people, but encouraging people and being somebody that is reliable to our community. And I do want to state that having over 25 letters of recommendations from our community being sent to the council, people I've worked with, people I've mentored, people who I volunteered with, who believe in me, I'm thankful for the support on my behalf. And if selected, I will serve our community with integrity and with diligence. My experience in my military service, my heart to serve people, and energy to bring solutions to our city make me the candidate to be chosen for the seat. Thank you, council. And I have the utmost confidence that you will choose the applicant who best represents our city and who will help lead.
Thank you very much, Nicole.
Of course.
Love your enthusiasm. And now we go to our next candidate, our former mayor, Joe Pala. Good evening, Mr. Pala. And welcome to our forum. Thank you for your application. Melanie, please the first question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Please describe your background and how you are uniquely qualified to fill the vacancy on the city council.
Well, good evening. I hope you could hear me okay. This is, I'm not real familiar with Zoom, so thank you. First of all, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, staff, members of the public, thank you for all your hard work tonight. It was a very interesting and very well-presented meeting this evening. Well, as you know, I served 12 years on the city council from 2006 to 2018. And during that time, I served as mayor three times, vice mayor three times. Prior to joining the city council, I served four years on the Santa Rosa Junior College Board of Trustees. I have over 35 years in the law enforcement profession. And I served as chief of police in four different jurisdictions, three of those in Sonoma County. I have 30 years in the United States Coast Guard and Coast Guard Reserve. Served in 24 years as a special agent with the Coast Guard Investigative Services, which is a criminal investigator. During my 12 years on the council, I served on several regional and state boards, including the City Finance Administration and Police Subcommittee, the City Public Works Subcommittee, the Joint City School District Subcommittee, the Joint City Fire District Subcommittee, the Redwood Empire Administrative Insurance Fund, REMITH, which we are self-insured as a city, one of 15 that are in the insurance pool. I was on the Board of Directors for almost 10 years. And I included, I served one year as president of the board. I also served one year as the chair of the Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association. And I served several years on the Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association Legislative Committee. I served several years on the League of California Cities Board of Directors, on the Public Safety Policy Committee, and on the Mayor and Council Members Executive Committee. I served several years as chair of the League Redwood Empire Division Legislative Committee, and I served one year as division president. My background has provided me the skills to fully understand how local government works at every level. Over the years, I've developed an excellent working relationship with many local, state, and federal elected officials. I listen to residents and I work hard to find acceptable solutions to their concerns. Thank you.
And I will move on to Councilmember Lance, Vice Mayor Lance.
Thank you, Joe, for applying. Your question from me is going to be this. What do you consider are the top one or two challenges currently facing the city? And what are the key steps you'll take immediately to address them as a newly elected council member?
Thank you. I feel the city council has many challenges to address in the coming years. Right now, I think one of the biggest ones is improved communications between city government and residents. I read a lot of negative comments on social media and hear negative comments in the community about our city government, some of which I believe to be factually incorrect. Misinformation spreads quickly. People read it, they hear it, and they begin to believe it. With the loss of our local newspaper, the city needs to put in place, in my opinion, a monthly newsletter that provides regular updates on city activities, operations, projects, events, et cetera, like we had years ago with the Cloverdalian newspaper that went out every, every month. The newsletter can be designed to keep residents fully informed on city activities and can identify concerns that are posted on social media or heard from residents. The newsletter can provide the reader with the nature of the concern and provide the reader with factual information outlining what the city has done to address the problem. Equally important, it can provide factual information as to the reasons the city government cannot address or resolve the situation. That way, residents will have a better understanding of the situation. Another challenge are the growing concerns over the homeless situation. The city council has created that homeless community advisory group, which is a great first start of identifying and discussing the concerns that are out there. I feel we should continue working with the county, the state, the federal officials to obtain funding and resources needed to address and mitigate the concerns. It's critical that Cloverdale maintain a strong voice at the table in efforts to get funding and other resources needed to properly address the concerns. Another challenge is addressing the water issues. With the lack of rain, water availability has become a major concern for our residents. The League of Californias, the League of California Cities, in my opinion, would be a great resource to put an ad hoc committee in place to review and identify potential options on how government can continue providing water should our reservoirs continue to dry up due to lack of rain as we move forward. These options and recommendations, once approved by the league board, can be presented and discussed with the state and federal legislators in an effort to obtain funding and resources needed to implement some of those options that were identified. And the last challenge I just want to bring up, not, there's a lot of others, but the more pressing ones is the emergency preparedness. And some, a lot of progress has been made in this area. But the city, in my opinion, should really consider appointing or contracting for a designated emergency operations coordinator who can review, and I see I'm out of time, but can review and make recommendations. And so I'll leave it at that since the time is out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Joe. And the last question is, describe how you're going to foster positive intra-council working relationships and build consensus on policy decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, a monthly newsletter mailed directly to all residents would be a great way to communicate to the residents on the things that are going on throughout the city. It would allow the city to keep residents fully informed on city issues and explain why things may or may not be moving forward as originally planned. It can outline the reasons behind delays and allow the city to factually address incorrect information, such as rumors that are circulating throughout the community. When I was mayor, I hosted a town hall meeting that included a panel consisting of senior staff from Cloverdale, school, senior staff from the school district, senior staff from Alexander Valley Healthcare, senior staff from the citrus fair, senior staff from the fire district. I had Supervisor Gore there also as a participant. Each provider gave the community an update on things going on within their operation. And the community had an opportunity to ask very pointed questions. The town hall was recorded, so residents who could not attend could watch the event at home. And I would suggest the city council consider hosting annually, or even biannually, a community town hall event for that purpose, to keep the community involved and to help rebuild strong trust between our city government and our residents. Thank you.
Do you have another three minutes to give us?
Madam Mayor, I did not get a chance to ask question number three.
Oh, I am so sorry.
That's okay.
But, okay, ask the question. And then, Joe, I would like for when you make your closing statement to address the issue of intra-council working relationship. Okay?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, let me ask my question. And Joe, first of all, thank you for applying. And this question has to do with communications, which you've already covered pretty well. But the question is, what action would you take to improve communicating the city council's position on major or significant policy decisions, such as development project to the community?
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, again, I really believe we need to put in a mechanism in place, such as a monthly newsletter that's directly mailed to the residents. And it could be maybe something like Cloverdale Connect. It could be maybe part of that publication. But we should be putting in information of things that are going on throughout the city, including projects, development. And we should be explaining and giving people an opportunity in that article, if they have pointed questions, how to contact and get answers. And those answers, the questions, could be part of the next publication. Because if one person has a question, there's a good chance other people in the community also have that same question. So it could be a way of communicating to the community and answering questions and answer a lot of the questions before they're even asked for some residents in the community. But I do know, like I mentioned, there's a lot of misinformation that's circulating, and it's growing. And a lot of that's not accurate information that's growing out there. And there's got to be a mechanism to kind of give factual information out there to correct that. And I think when that happens, it's going to help build trust again within the community. Because there's a lot of things that I'm reading that I feel are just incorrect, but it's building. And that's not good, because it's putting some ill feelings towards the operation when I know we have a good council, works hard. We have good city employees, work hard. We just need to get the right information out there with the facts. And I think a town hall is a good way to do that as well, where we get a lot of the disciplines together to talk about what's going on in their area as well. Because then we could collaborate as a community to see how we can work together on those things. So I would really move to push those things so we can better, get better communications established. Thank you.
Thank you. And your closing statement, please.
Okay, well, first of all, I'd just like to talk about building consensus. Several years ago, former councilmember Carol Russell and I wrote the first Cloverdale City Council Governance Manual that was formally adopted by the full city council. That manual is still in place today. In the manual, if you take a look at it, Article 3 talks about the duties and privileges of members. And Section 1 reads in part, "The city council desires to establish and maintain a civil environment in conducting city business. It strives to treat with respect fellow council members, city staff, and the general public." This manual really should be reviewed and updated annually. Once updated, the manual should come back to the full council for final review and ultimately be adopted. Once adopted, all city council members should abide by it. In addition, I would suggest that the city council with senior staff participate in an annual team building session. I know that was discussed earlier in the meeting. And I think that's critical. Because the purpose of the team building session would be to review the strengths and weaknesses of the city council and city staff and identify specific functions that are working well and those that we may need to improve on. And I'm familiar with the process. I've been through many of them over the years in my career, both in law enforcement and as a member of the Santa Rosa Junior College Board of Trustees. The college does that annually with all the board of trustees and the senior staff from the college. And the process, I have to tell you, from my experience, works very well and can be very productive in building a strong city team. And with that, I'd just like to say I've got a minute left and I would like to thank the city council for the interview. I'm happy to see that we have five good candidates for you to consider. As mentioned earlier, I feel I have the background, the skills needed to take on the position. Without the learning curve, if selected, I feel I can hit the ground running. I have an excellent working relationship with other local, state, and federal government officials. I listen to residents and I work hard to find acceptable solutions. I understand the city government functions and I understand city budget and I understand budget constraints. I understand how budget constraints affect the city council's ability to accomplish all their goals. I have a proven record of building a collaborative working relationship between local, regional, and state elected officials. I have 12 years' experience on the city council. And I'm ready to jump in and assist in any way I can. And with that, I will, I see I'm out of time, so I will say thank you for your consideration and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Pala, for your continuous devotion to Cloverdale. And now we'll move on to the next candidate, who is Eric Sanders. I won't skip your question this time, Gus. Eric, are you there? Please unmute.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you very much, Eric. Welcome and thank you for your application. I will have Councilmember Bagby begin with the questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Eric, please describe your background and how you are uniquely qualified to fill the vacancy on the city council.
Okay, great. Thank you. So my background starts with the U.S. Navy. I am a 10-year veteran of the United States Navy, where I worked primarily on electronic systems and weapons guidance. From there, I moved on into public works. I've been working in the area of public works, operations, and management for another 10 years. So I've got a total of roughly 20 years of government service under my belt. I'm currently serving the city of Cloverdale as a planning commissioner. And I have been educated at the Santa Rosa Junior College, as well as And I have been educated at the Santa Rosa Junior College as well as Sonoma State University with degrees in natural science, liberal studies, and business administration. And I have kind of a unique and intimate knowledge of the city's infrastructure and facilities since I am a former city of Cloverdale public works employee, and I'm currently working as the manager of another local utility purveyor, where we do have electronic water meter readers, a recycled water system, and advanced wastewater treatment. And so for those reasons, I have kind of a uniqueness in my life experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Please, Councilmember Lamb.
Evening, Eric, and thank you for applying. Here's your question. What do you consider are the top one or two challenges currently facing the city? And what are the key steps you would take immediately to address them as a newly elected council member?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So as most people know, there are a multitude of very serious issues facing this city of Cloverdale today. I've chosen to talk about two that are very important to me, and those would be the housing situation and the infrastructure. So for housing, there's two main components that I'm most concerned with, and those would be the homelessness situation that we have in town. We need to, we need to do the research and find some real outreach problems. I know we've talked a lot about them in the past, and it seems like a lot of the things that we're doing haven't worked. And some of the ideas that I've heard thrown around recently have some really good possibilities. So I'd like to expand on those. The second part of that is the current and near-future development projects. So I know that we have multiple projects on the books. So what we really need to think about is how are those projects going to help the situation with housing, and how are they going to impact the current residents and our infrastructure? And that brings me to the second item, infrastructure. It is really important to me that we protect and modernize the water and wastewater systems that we have now. And how I propose to do that would be to immediately take a really close look at our capital improvement plan and review the proposed projects that we have and what years they fall into. Also reviewing the budgets for those projects and the fund balances and forecasts. So now that we have passed the new water and wastewater rates, we'll have enhanced opportunities to do some of these projects and expand them into the future. And another thing would be to take a look at some of the grant and funding opportunities and try and be creative with some of those financing. And the last thing would be our streets. So everybody that drives around here knows what the condition of the streets are, and I know that has been really challenging in the past to come up with ways to finance some of those street projects. So those would be the items that I'd be looking for in the immediate future.
Thank you very much, Eric. Welcome, Madam Walter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Eric, thank you very much for applying. And this question has to do with communications. So what action would you take to help improve communicating the city council's position on major or significant policy decisions such as a development project to the community?
Thank you, Councilmember Walter. So being that member of a multi-generational family here in Cloverdale, I'm very well-connected with the community. And one of the things that I like to do is have personal conversations with everybody. Now, I know that's not really possible to talk to everybody here in town every day, but through the, through a series of personal conversations and emails, you know, my email address is on my application, it's attached to this agenda. Anybody in town can write me an email, and I'd be happy to respond to that. But also, there are some towns nowadays that have developed their own phone app. And so one of the things that I'd like to do is look into the possibility of doing that in a way that would put the word out in multiple languages for press releases, give push notifications, and send out newsletters. You could put the agendas out there and all of the other important items. That way, the community will have a better sense and understanding of the council's position on some of these projects that are upcoming.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Would you describe how you are going to foster positive intra-council working relationships and build consensus on policy decisions?
I'd be happy to, Madam Mayor. Thank you. So by working with the other members of the city council, communicating and doing the due diligence that's required for making policy decisions. I'm a very friendly and approachable person with the ability to see both sides of an issue and consider both sides to be valid and important. And I have the ability to emphasize the pros and cons of each of those sides in order to facilitate a meaningful conversation regarding the decision that needs to be made. And so in that way, I believe that I can foster cooperation and understanding and communication between the council members themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, could you please share with us other thoughts, closing statement of items or issues that perhaps you didn't have an opportunity to share with us?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. I don't have a lot to say. I'll keep it short and sweet, but I did just want to say thank you to everybody tonight for allowing me this opportunity. I know that this agenda item is not an easy one, especially considering the amazing candidates that have been allowed to speak here tonight. But if I'm appointed, I'll do my absolute best to serve the city of Cloverdale and look forward to continuing my service to this community as a member of the council. That's all. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Lamb, Councilmembers Bagby and Walter, and everybody else who has endured through this evening festivities. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay. Now, Jose, do we open to the public, or is it just our deliberation?
No, this is, this is open to the public. It's an item open to the public, and you can decide when you open it. Mayor, if this is the right time, you could definitely open to the public.
Yes, I think I would like to open to the public and then bring it back. Any hands? Irene?
Yes, currently, we have a hand from Nina.
Thank you. Go ahead, Nina. Please unmute.
You know, I looked for that button, and I couldn't find it. It's getting late. I just wanted to say thank you to all five applicants. You're amazing, and that's why I love to be part of this community, period.
Thank you, Nina. Next person, please.
Next, we have Linda.
Hi, thank you. Yes, thank you to all the applicants. And I guess, just my one question concern, and I don't expect an answer, but unless that's possible, is the person who was the former mayor, city council member for so long, you know, we just went through this grueling thing on the water rate increase because it was deferred. And I'm just wondering if this person was a part of all this deferment, and that would concern me moving forward, having that person in that position.
Thank you, Linda. Next person, please.
Next, we have Leanne.
Hi, everyone. Oh, my gosh, what a long meeting. God bless y'all. I'm glad we're all still awake, but I broke six months of sobriety on coffee for this meeting, so thank you. I don't know, there's so much going on here, but of course, I support Nicole. She's amazing. She has the ability to be open-minded and accept lots of different inputs. She's educated. She has an agriculture background. She's got the military background. Not only that, but she's already engaged in this community. Eric, very impressive, but you are a very busy family man that's got a full-time job and can't do that. Joe, your time has come and gone. And I mean, I applaud all of you for stepping up. Jenny, keep trying, but it's just not there. I support Nicole 100%. Come on, I mean, she's the future. She, y'all can get along with her. She's reasonable. She's not, she has logic. That's all we need in this town right now. She knows what's going on with the homeless. I know that Eric said he's heard things. She knows things. That's it.
Thank you. Other comments to the council?
I'm checking for raised hands, and I don't see, oh, wait. We have Renee.
Thank you, Renee.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for another late evening. Just one thing I'd like to encourage everybody as we make the consideration of who would be best for this role, I think we need to look overall at experience within the city to know that the person that we're selecting has, you know, expertise that they're bringing with them that's applicable to a lot of the issues that we have right now. Certainly helpful to have a background in law enforcement. And certainly helpful to have a background with Bandit.
We're losing you, Renee. We can't hear you.
And so just, that's what I would encourage. Okay, can you hear me now? No, are you there?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. It looked like the internet went unstable on my side. But just, I wanted to encourage the city council when considering, you know, who to select. This is an important decision right now with everything happening in the city. So I'd like to see someone in the position that has, you know, experience with city matters, with budgets, with fire risks, with transients, with crime, all of the big issues that we have right now. I think it would be really helpful to have someone in the position that has previous expertise and that can add to the mix of the current council that would fit in well. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, yes, next we have Sue.
Hello, and thank you. Thank you all applicants for taking the opportunity to throw your hat into the ring tonight. It's impressive. I do want to bring forward that I hope that the council considers Joe Paula. I have lived in Cloverdale over seven years, and I have found him to historically demonstrate an investment in the city of Cloverdale. He possesses experience, professionalism, and fairness in the roles I've seen him in as council member, vice mayor, and mayor. And I think at this very crucial time, I think it's really important that we bring someone on board that has extensive experience and qualifications. And Joe, through the years, has shown that. So I'm just hoping that my comment is considered in your selection. Thank you all again.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the community who would like to address us regarding the applicant?
I'm checking the list of attendees, and I do not see any hands raised, Mayor. Oh, wait, one more, looks like.
Thank you.
Of course. From Angela.
Go ahead, Angela.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to say that all of the applicants did a phenomenal job. I was very impressed with all of the interviews. I wish you all the best. And city council, I think you have a very hard decision tonight. Best of luck to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to close comments and bring it back for deliberation. Who starts? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Walter.
Well, it seems that I always go first. So, you know, I just raised my hand because nobody else was raising their hand. So Melanie, Todd, are you comfortable with me going first? Well, I want to thank all of the candidates. Everybody brings something to the table, and I think every one of them would make a good council member. We're tasked with a very difficult situation and decision to make this evening, and that's filling the remainder of Councilmember Turner's 18 months on the city council. And I'm looking for an individual that's not interested in running much beyond 2022. I think it's important that every candidate that applied, if they have aspirations to get on the city council, that they put their name in the hat in 2022. I'm looking for an individual that's just interested in doing 18 months. I know Councilmember Paula, I've worked with him before. I think we all have. He brings a lot to the table. There's no learning curve. He could pick up the phone tomorrow and call Mike McGuire, Jim Wood, Supervisor Gore. He can start working on the swimming pool again. I mean, he's just up to speed on everything. I do not want to give an individual a leg up for the election in 2022. I think that needs to be a level playing field. So right now, the way I'm looking at it, I'm looking at Joe Paula. So that's the way I feel. I'm interested to hear how everyone else feels. And by the way, just, I did a little homework on this, and I know Joe has the support of the community. His last election, he received 24% of the vote. He was the number-one vote getter. And I just think that shows support from the community. I know he's got some support from the county and the state. I started first. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, the fact is, is that we have precedent for having appointed council members who then go on to run for reelection. And it's only been seven months since the last election. And so I just, I find that that argument, you know, do I want someone to run? Do I not someone to, do I, do I want someone who is going to run, or do I want somebody who is, you know, not going to run? I don't think that that holds water because I think that, you know, Gus has appointed folks who have then gone on to successfully run for council. So let's just, let's be fair, that we already have a precedent for that on the Cloverdale City Council. City Council. I also would like to add that, um, as far as the vote count for Jenny Candelaria Orr, the fact is, is if there had been three seats open instead of two seats just seven months ago, she'd be sitting on this council right now. And so, um, she had the, she, she convinced, um, after living her for seven years and being a political newcomer, she convinced a significant, um, percentage of the voters in Cloverdale to vote for her during a pandemic when she could not have, um, you know, a, a meet the candidate night, uh, she couldn't have, uh, you know, uh, meet the candidate coffees. She had to be very careful and clearly the, the voters of Cloverdale, you know, um, they supported her. She beat an incumbent and she beat the other, other candidate very handily. So, um, I think that that speaks very highly for her and her support in, in the community. You know, to me, I think that there are, you know, there are three candidates that, that I'm considering tonight who I think can just step right in. I think that, um, ironically, you know, Jenny is the only non-vet, but I think 14 years in the public school system, um, counts for something as well. I think it compares pretty closely to the Air Force and the Navy and the, um, and the Coast Guard. That I think it's, um, I think it's a, a pretty high level of, of commitment to public service that she's demonstrated there. Um, and all, so I, I, to me, that the three candidates who are qualified to step in and start working, who have the education, the commensurate experience are definitely Jenny Candelaria Orr, Eric Sanders with his municipal experience and also his service on the planning commission. He demonstrated his commitment and his, his knowledge. Joe Paula is, you know, one of our most experienced, um, public servants. And, um, I think that he obviously deserves, um, consideration and show somebody who I admire greatly. I admire his, um, his, um, mentoring of me. He is somebody who got me involved in the League of Cities and got me interested in, um, working on the Sonoma County Legislative Committee. And, um, I know that he could rock, walk right into, uh, that role and get to work as well. So that's what I'm thinking. I think that those are the, my three top candidates who I'd, um, like to see us deliberate about and consider this evening.
Thank you, council member Bagby. Vice Mayor Lance?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I want to say thank you to all five candidates. It, I, it was a tough crowd. They all did phenomenal in their interviews. They were all well prepared. The background of each, each candidate was amazing, is probably better than the lineup for, uh, most elections. And so it's good to see that, that Cloverdale actually people that love and care and want to be here and make a difference. I know I saw a couple of them during the, during my election and I think that, uh, it's good to see them to keep trying and, and being here because all it does is make them stronger. And with that said, I've narrowed it down to three candidates at this point. And one of them, I mean, they, I thought they blew it out of the park. I thought, I thought Nicole's interview was phenomenal. Took leaps and bounds above where she was during the election. And I don't mean that in a rude way, but it was just, I thought she did a phenomenal job. My next one I had was Eric Sanders. I thought Eric with all his background and his, uh, knowledge of our own city, being on the planning commission and, and having a whole bunch of ideas with our own infrastructure and housing is that makes him very strong to be able to jump right in and hit the ground running. But nobody can beat the 20 page background resume from Joe Paula, who has done everything, knows everything, knows everyone. And, you know, next step could be running for Newsom seat if, if it happens to come open. So I just, I, I've narrowed it down to three and I'm, I'll start there with you guys.
Yes, it's a tough one here. I am very impressed and very happy with all five candidates. I definitely, um, disagree that we need to have somebody who is only interested in 18 months. I think the interest ought to be to serve the people of Cloverdale regardless of, regardless of the time limit. I definitely, um, was impressed by Nicole and very happy with Ms. Emmons. However, my support would go for three candidates and that would be, um, Joe Paula, Jenny Candelaria and Eric Sanders because of their experience in city politics and what I have seen of their work in the community for a long time now, since I got to, um, a long time for me is five years. So for the last five years that I've been in Cloverdale, those have been three individuals that have stood out. So we have to come to a decision. How do we do this?
And, and Mayor, if I may, um, you could definitely, at this point, so anybody can make a motion. And if it gets a second, it would go down vote. We could also, uh, you've, you've talked about all the candidates, but in this case, it could be by motion. That's, that's, I've seen it done many times, a motion of the resolution, um, putting forward one of the candidates or one of the applicants.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jenny Candelaria Orr. She was the third highest vocater in the last election only seven months ago. She clearly has wide support in the community. And I believe that her professional experience will translate very well into, um, coming on board and adding some, um, new blood to this team.
Is there a second? There's not a second? Motion dies.
Madam, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Go ahead.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Joe Paula to complete the 18 months, um, of the remaining term of council member Turner.
And I would be honored to second that.
And just for the record, the motion is to adopt the resolution. And then, um, if it passes, we would of course fill in the names and all the blanks of the resolution.
Council member Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lamb?
Aye.
Council member Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Crease?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So, um, congratulations are in order and welcome back, Joe. Please, uh, instruct us on how to get him sworn in.
Yes, so I will bring Joe in as a panelist and then if he can, let's get him in first.
Madam Mayor, members of council, while, uh, the city clerk, Irene Martha Worby, works on bringing in our newly appointed council member, Joe Paula, uh, just in preparation of what's to come, uh, the, uh, city clerk is going to, uh, issue that oath of office. Mr. Paula to, um, take the oath. I know he's done it many times before. And upon, uh, upon acceptance of the oath, he would be taken, uh, on, on the council.
So, welcome. Joe, um, I know you didn't want to turn your camera on, but do you mind turning it on for just a moment so you can raise your right hand and we can swear you in?
Do you hear me?
Yeah.
Am I, okay, I'll, I'll try to turn my camera on if I can find the right button here.
Success.
Thank you. I just, if I could just, Madam Mayor and council member, I'd just like to thank you for, uh, I know it was a tough decision and I want to thank you for the confidence that you put in me and I assure you, I want to, uh, jump in and be a part of the, the team.
All right. So if you just want to raise your right hand, I state your name.
I, Joseph Paula.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, council member Paula, and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Well, this has been a long night. All right. So we have done this and now we need direction to the mayor to support appointments made by Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association, Student Selection Committee and Board of Directors. This is taking place tomorrow night, another long night. So, uh, what is the recommendation?
That's correct, Mayor. So, um, we're just revisiting a couple of these appointments. One, um, that is being brought back is the Golden Gate Bridge Highway and Transportation District. Uh, there's one position opened and we only received one letter of interest from Gerard Judice, Mayor of Brunner Park.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I'd like to, um, suggest that we go ahead and support Gerard. He was a candidate in the last round and, um, he's going to do a great job for us on, um, on Golden Gate.
That's, that's good to me. Comments for, from the other council members?
I'm fine with that, Madam Mayor.
And Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I'm very confident that Gerard will do a great job, um, very well. Then we have LaFco alternate.
Yes, so Madam Mayor and council members, we had one letter of interest back in May, or excuse me, March, from council member Patrick Slater of Sebastopol. And we have received no other letters since then.
Madam Mayor, if I may, um, yeah, I served with Patrick on, um, Sonoma Clean Power and have been acquainted with the, the quality of his work. He is actually an architect himself, so LaFcos are a really natural fit. And of course, he, he, he will be the alternate behind, um, Mark Landman from Cotati, but I know that, um, Patrick will be prepared and, um, be, um, objective and bring a lot of industry experience. I think it's, um, it, it's a great fit for him. So I suggest that we, we recommend him for that position.
Still working with him in zero waste, right?
Are you?
Yes.
You're, okay, there you go. Well, then you know what he's like. You know he'll be thorough.
Okay. Thank you for that guidance. Um, the next measure, oh, Oversight Committee letter.
Yes, so again, uh, Mayor and council members, you had approved back in March, two letters of interest, one to fill two seats, uh, one from council member Ben Ford of Cotati and another from council member Kevin McDonald of Petaluma. Since then, we did receive a letter of interest from Sydney Smith with Santa Rosa City Schools.
Am I supposed to say who I choose to, who I recommend, or you guys tell me?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, who, do you have someone in mind? I mean, I, I, I kind of had some ideas about this, but let's have a discussion.
Okay, what ideas did you have?
Well, um, you know, I reviewed the, the three letters and, you know, they're all excellent candidates. I know that they'd be great on the Oversight Board, but I kind of have to give the nod to the math professor on this particular board since they are, i- i- it is the, it is the Oversight Committee and, um, they're going to be closely looking at those Measure O funds. I think he's going to, Ben, Ben is a, um, uh, he, he's very involved, has been involved in Cotati for a long time. He has, um, a tremendous amount of compassion and community reach, but then he has that, he has that math professor side as well, where he's great at crunching the numbers. And, um, I, I know that he'll do a, a great job on the Oversight Committee. I mean, and, and, and the other two candidates are, are tremendous candidates as well. So I think we'd be well served. But with, when I'm looking at the three candidates and looking at their, their qualifications, I, I kind of just, on this one, I, I tend to give the nod to Ben.
That was my candidate.
Oh, well, there you go.
I'm okay with that also.
Okay. And then measure.
So it is two seats, so do you support, is there support for another?
Oh, really? I thought it was just the one.
No, it's two and I would go with Kevin also.
I would too. I, I'd love to give him an opportunity since he's a, a, a newish council member as, as well. It'd be a great, great experience for him.
And he's qualified?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Comments? Okay, so we'll go for, uh, oh, we don't need to do the North Bay. We belong to the Redwood Empire.
Yeah, that's not us.
That's correct. And again, it's just giving the authority, um, to the mayor to vote upon discretion.
Yeah, you might have to be a, um, you might have to be a tiebreaker, Mark, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, um, and council members, um, we've given our mayor direction on who to vote for. As always, I'd like to give the mayor the latitude, uh, to make changes if, if, if she sees fit, uh, for any particular good reason. So Madam Mayor, I'd like to extend that to you with support from the fellow council members.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And now, I think there are two, uh, there were two, um, boards that went without applications and we should make sure that, um, you volunteer council member Paula for those now that, um, his dance card is empty.
Well, you know, I, I would just like to say, if I could, Madam Mayor, welcome back, uh, council member Paula. Now go open that swimming pool. You started that project a couple of years ago and it's, we haven't gotten it open yet.
Well, thank you.
I thought it was funny. I'm sorry.
It is funny. It's just late, Gus.
All right, first again. You know, I'm having problems with my connection. You guys hear me okay? Okay. So this might speed up the meeting because I want to make sure that, uh, I don't lose the connection totally. So we have. So, we have the selection there, Patrick, Ben, Kevin. And we don't vote on Sawyer. And I thank you for your confidence in whatever vote. I'm quite familiar with the candidates and any other things that may come about. So, I'm going to go ahead and we don't need to open this to the public. I'm going to go ahead and go with the subcommittee reports. My report will be in writing tomorrow.
Thank you, I will tell them, yeah, I wasn't sure. Mayor, we do have one hand up in the public if you wish to open public comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Angela, you can unmute yourself.
Did you call me?
Yes, your hand was raised, or was that by accident?
Oh, I've never even touched the device. I had no idea it was raised.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're doing that, Angela.
Okay, thank you. And so let's go to the subcommittee reports. Melanie, Finance Administration and Police.
This is our next, well, okay. I think this hasn't been updated. I don't think our next meeting is June 7th.
You just had it.
We just had that meeting.
Yes. And so, well, yeah, there's a problem here. Now that we have another council member, we need to reassign council members to subcommittees. Is this something we're going to do now, or we're going to do it on the next one?
Mayor Cruz, if I can, I'll respond to your question. It's a great question. At your next meeting, we are going to bring back a discussion item for council along with a resolution for council's consideration for reorganization of subcommittees and regional boards. We want to specifically focus on those subcommittees where there were vacant positions left by former Mayor Turner. And if there's interest in council members, you know, moving from existing subcommittees to those vacant positions. And along with that, there is also a vacancy in the regional board appointment for the Northern Sonoma County Air Quality District as well. So we'll bring that back. Council is required to make those appointments by resolution.
Okay.
It also will provide the opportunity for council to establish, if you so desire, any updated meeting dates and times for those subcommittees, the subcommittee meetings.
Okay, sounds good. And let me get back here. I'm losing all my juices. Okay, I'm back. So, alright. So, that will be done in the next meeting. And do you have any reports from yesterday, from Monday, Melanie?
Only if you have any questions.
No, I sat through it.
Okay.
Okay, planning and sustainability, June 15th, I'm not going to be there.
Our next meeting is June 15th.
Yeah, so I'll be there via Zoom. And Community Development Planning Log? Kevin, is that Kevin?
That item, Madam Mayor, is an item that's on the Planning and Sustainability Subcommittee item. It's just a.
Oh, okay, I missed, no indentation, okay. Public Works.
That would be July 27th, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great. And to the community, please submit or attend this meeting, submit any questions or concerns. Joint City Fire District, Vice Mayor Lance is going to cover this meeting on the 14th. And the agenda is already posted. And there will be some talk about vegetation management activities and some of the city efforts to help with this. Joint City School District, Vice Mayor Lamb.
Madam Mayor, we have a tentative date set for the 15th for a special meeting, if necessary, for some negotiations. I don't know if that has been confirmed yet or not, as whether it's needed. Otherwise, our next meeting is set for July 19th at 5:00. There are really no new updates. Everything is still on track at the school district of the projects they are doing. And I am the next on the homeless community advisory group.
Yes.
Excuse me. We just met and had a very heated but good, positive and exciting meeting, I'd say, for our community. And even though we didn't get through all of our topics, there was a lot that was said and a lot that was learned. And I look forward to meetings like that. And we had scheduled it at 5:00, which was different than normal, and so we got a different crowd and I think it worked out. So I'm going to be hoping we can alternate times for our meetings.
Yes.
That's it. Next meeting is set for July 13th at 1:00 PM.
And I compare with Vice Mayor Lance. It was a very good meeting. People were able to express their frustrations and we're looking for more solutions and alternatives. Mayor, Vice Mayor Lance and I are attending the North County Planning Commission on homelessness. Well, Planning Committee on homelessness. Today, I was able to visit a turnkey at Sebastopol and also visited Los Gilicos with members of the county and other jurisdictions. So, thank you for this effort. We need to keep at it. And as I said, my council report will be coming in in a written form tomorrow. Any informational reports that we need to discuss right now?
Yeah, well, Madam Mayor, I did submit my report in writing, but just in case folks on council or anybody who might still be with us missed the news. Congressman Huffman has put in an earmark for a substantial chunk of money to fund the smart rail bridge over the river at Healdsburg. And that represents a huge step forward in bringing passenger rail to Healdsburg and Cloverdale as promised. So I'm watching that very closely to make sure it doesn't disappear in markups. But hopefully, we'll have some good news on that soon.
Thank you very much, and I'm sure that Mayor Carol Russell will be very happy and very proud if, when it finally gets here. I also would like to report that on Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00, City Manager and Councilmember Bagby will be at the plaza with the drought buckets that are going to be distributed. That is a joint venture, and at the same time, it's first comes first served. So make sure that you're there early. And we'll move on to any legislative reports and direction?
Madam Mayor, staff does not have any legislative reports this evening?
Okay, and I think we are more than informed on the water supply. Do we need to go over that again?
Madam Mayor, just one brief announcement. The State Water Resource Control Board has released draft emergency regulations related to curtailment of water rights in the Russian River watershed. They're drafted at this point, but we'll be looking at those closely because they do have the potential to impact water use by our community. So it'll be something that we'll want to watch very closely as the state board responds to drought conditions in the Russian River watershed.
Yes, and I have inquired with the North Sonoma Water Board because some people have been receiving letters and we're trying to get all the information so that we could respond in an intelligent manner to our constituents in Cloverdale. Okay, and anything about COVID-19?
Again, Madam Mayor, just a brief report. In accordance with the reopening plan that was prepared by myself and staff, City Hall did reopen. It's been a relatively soft reopening. Mondays and Tuesdays afternoon from 1:00 to 5:00. And we're currently, you know, staffing up after we staffed down due to the pandemic.
It's actually Tuesday and Thursday, David.
I mean, Tuesday, Thursday, I'm sorry. Thank you, Susan. I think clarification. And customers have been coming in and being able to conduct business in person. And, you know, staff has been, you know, making the appropriate adjustments to reopen.
Okay, thank you. Any future agenda items? Council members? I have one.
I have.
Go ahead. Yes, please, Councilmember Paula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to ask the city manager if he could check his schedule for me. And I would like to schedule a meeting with him for next week. Send me a few dates and times. I have some questions and I'm certainly would like to get updated on some of the things that have been going on. So if you could just, David, if you could send me an email with some times and dates that work with your calendar and I'll confirm ones that work with mine. Thank you.
Councilmember Paula, I have to do that. I'll start with, we'll get your email set up as quickly as possible. And, you know, I'll follow up with you on your private cell phone until we do that.
Thank you.
And I would also like to schedule a meeting with you, Councilmember Paula.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Be with you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I would like for us to have as future agenda items, the situation of basketball. How is that called? Stands on the streets? So that's something that I don't know if we should have it on the agenda or bring it to Public Works or policing because it's a safety issue that I would like to address. And, yeah, so far. Anybody else?
Madam Mayor, I do.
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to, I don't know if it needs to be a future agenda item or if it's something that we need to discuss with the city manager, but I would like to get our meetings back in person.
That is something that has to go according to the state. Jose, could you address that?
I know, and we're about the last place around is not doing something in person, and so that's why it should be available to us.
And as far as legally, there are many jurisdictions that are doing in-person meetings now. And that's all over the state. And I think that, and David, I know you have more information, but I know that David has been working very diligently looking at as far as the logistics of how do we get back? Not only the employees back to City Hall, as you know, but also what do the meetings look like? And just juggling the logistics of, you know, is it a hybrid meeting? Is it all in person? You know, what does the seating arrangements look like? But I know that David is working on that. And David, I didn't want to steal your thunder. I know you've been doing a lot of that work already.
No, thank you, Jose. And if council is in agreement, we can bring back a discussion item that kind of covers the main issues around reopening so that we can, you know, make sure there's consensus with the council on, you know, how we conduct in-person meetings and what technology we involve. For instance, some councils are doing kind of a hybrid approach similar to how we did when we first established, when we first kind of started addressing COVID where it was a, where it was hybrid. We had combination, in-person versus Zoom. You know, do we want to eliminate Zoom completely? So there's some different options on how we can go back to in-person meetings. And maybe the best approach would be for us to outline those options for the council's consideration. And then we could start, you know, look at the start of the next fiscal year, you know, begin implementation next fiscal year.
Yes, that's very good. And also, I would like, the pandemic situation is not over. I would like to make sure that health and safety is also a priority.
So are we going to put it on the agenda? Basically, it looks like we definitely need to discuss it, David.
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, that.
Madam Mayor, if I may, you know, I think that the city manager has done a really good job of monitoring what the situation is. We're getting regular updates from the League of Cities. And we, you know, we recently got something advising that, you know, the governor's office is going to be extending the public meeting rules past June 15th. And I don't think it's anything that we need to agendize to push because it really ultimately isn't going to be up to us. It's going to be up to the governor's orders and it's going to be a result of the Health Department of Sonoma County setting those guidelines. So I, I mean, every time, and everything else, I don't like to be reactive, but we don't actually have a lot of jurisdiction. Actually, we don't have any jurisdiction in this instance. And I would trust that senior staff can advise us when it's appropriate. We'll agendize it, keep us up to date, keep the public up to date. And we already have.
I'm losing. Yeah, so we can talk about it, but I definitely trust that everything is being done to address the situation. Okay, so it's quite late. I think we can continue to talk about this. And if there's nothing else, I think the meeting is adjourned.